It is now being recorded.
Thank you.
Great, okay, so before the public comment, I will go over the rules of engagement. My name is Vivian, I helped to facilitate the public engagement parts of these meetings. And Devon, if you could just pull up the slides, please, that would be great. Okay, so we do have two public hearing items. And before we start the meeting, we want our participants to know that the city is really striving into a vision co-created by the city staff and community for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. And this vision of the city is really designed to promote free conversation and dialogue, while also recognizing that we want to make sure everybody who is participating feels safe. We want to ensure that we make space for different viewpoints in our meetings as well, because we believe it leads to more informed decision-making. Next slide, please. And we have a lot more information on our website about what we call our productive atmospheres vision, if you're interested, but I'll be a bit specific right now for this meeting. We have a number of rules of decorum that are found in the Boulder Revised Code, and we have some general guidelines that are advisory nature to share with all of our meeting participants. We ask that all remarks and testimony raised tonight be related to city business. And also, we will not allow any participant to make threats or use any other forms of intimidation against any person in this session. Obscenities, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts the meeting or otherwise makes it impossible for us to continue is prohibited. And we do also ask that all participants from the public and from the board and staff identify themselves by the name they are commonly known by. And please display your first and last name before speaking, so that we can call on you. So if at the moment you only have your first name listed, please go ahead and rename yourself. And you can do that by using the right-click function. Next slide, so we're in the Zoom webinar format, and it allows for participants from the public to speak at designated times, but we will not be turning on video for community members because of security concerns in this platform. And there's no pre-existing list for signing up, so if you are in this meeting, we welcome you at the appropriate time, or if you wish to speak during the public comment time, or later during the public hearing time, to please raise your hand. And you can do this a couple of different ways. The bottom of your screen, you'll see a horizontal menu with three clickable items, and you can click on that, on the hand icon. If you have an expanded menu, you can get on the raised hand icon by clicking on reactions. And if you're participating by phone, you can dial *9, next to your phone number, a raised hand will appear, and we can call on you. That's it. Thank you. Over to you, John.
Okay, so do we have anybody who wants to address planning board on any issue other than those in the public hearings tonight? I see one hand raised there. Vivian, will you be?
Let's see. Yeah. This is CJ Oldham, and Devon, do you have the timer ready?
Yep, ready for you.
You have three minutes, CJ. Please go ahead and please also introduce yourself.
John said something other than the items on the agenda, so does that mean I wait until those come up?
Correct.
Okay, then I will wait until you guys address the 22nd and Pearl project.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else from the public? I don't see. Oh. We have three people with their hands raised, so let me start with Macon Coles. Macon, you have three minutes, please go ahead.
Good evening, planning board. My name is Macon Coles, I live at 1726 Mapleton. I'm speaking out of concern about the airport master planning process that you're taking up under matters. I'm concerned that the project, as it now is launched, seems to give short shrift to language that Lisa Morzell on the council in 2020 placed into section 6.23 of the comp plan that says, quote, "The time of the next airport master plan, the city will work with the community to reassess the potential for developing a portion of the airport for housing and neighborhood serving uses." The $255,000 scope of work that staff has included in your packet with the consultant says that the community process will be undertaken, quote, "to better understand the desired future of the airport, complementary to obligations and commitments to the city's partners at the FAA." No, I say, that is not what Lisa Morzell and the council had in mind. They imagined an open-ended engagement with the community to determine the future of the airport with or without the FAA. They had in mind the fact that this property, which the city already owns, at least most of it, provides the only opportunity for us to create a significant number of middle-income housing units in accordance with the 2016 adopted goal for 3,500 of such units to be created by 2030. This is the matter that is called for, the discussion that's called for by the comp plan, not further complimenting somebody's partnership with the FAA. Before we spend $255,000, and I hope that is not the FAA's money, please, use your authority to alert council that what is supposed to be a community conversation is headed in the wrong direction. It's being placed in the hands of consultants whose expertise is expanding airports, not responding to a housing crisis. The community conversation has to be open to consideration even of decommissioning the airport entirely. And yet, the scope of work removes that from the conversation. Let's lay this out. The airport right now serves 125 wealthy people whose hobby is an expensive, unsustainable, and polluting enterprise. We must entertain, as part of the community conversation, decommissioning the airport and creating a 15-minute neighborhood with housing and neighborhood services on this site. Lisa Smith, this is where the people you grew up with and about whom you spoke so eloquently at the last meeting could come home to live.
Macon, sorry to interrupt you, so three minutes.
Not by the airport manager. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Lynn Segal. Please go ahead, you have three minutes, Lynn.
First of all, there's no place for me to name myself. I don't have a video window, Vivian.
We can hear you, Lynn.
Yeah, you told me to name myself, I can't.
We can see your name, we can see your first and last name, there's nothing else to do. Please go ahead with your comments.
So I don't know that, so when you tell me to name myself, and I don't have anywhere to do it, you're asking me to do something I can't do, just so you know. I disagree with Macon. I think that this airport, and I've heard there are scientific planes that come out of there, there is some good function of that airport, and I think it is a valuable community asset, and it should be discussed between all stakeholders and not just those with more housing in an inelastic housing market anyway. It doesn't matter how much housing we build here, it's always going to be expensive. And the way things are going, it's going to be more expensive than other after you approve MU2 for Papelios and a fourth penthouse for them. This is not generating more affordable housing in Boulder. Also, I hear a lot of troubles, I've been reading on Nextdoor about Boulder Housing Partners, and you know, the federal funding that they're getting, and the unlivability in some of the structures, and people having to move out and having to having to get hotels and various things. So, you know, our affordable housing programs aren't always doing the best, you know, through health and human services. So, what are we doing here? When, you know, there's more and more approvals of unnecessary, I mean, what you wanted at Papilio, you should go back to 64 units. This now 165 units. This is not a community value for us to lose not only the retail, the BC2 that we had in that area. We lose those services, and we add not only 64 units, but 165. Well, those are human beings that demand services, and we've already got plenty of service demand taken up in the Boulder Valley Regional Plan. You know, I mean, Macy's has already been taken over, so now people are driving to Flatiron's Crossing, or wherever they go to a department store. This is not making 15-minute neighborhoods or 30-minute neighborhoods for the greater Boulder community. It's a different scale of things when you're taking the BVRC and turning it into housing.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, we have one more hand raised, and that's Jan or Jen. Please introduce yourself with your full name.
Hi, I'm Jan Hickory, and I just had a question on how to put my name in there without having to exit.
If you just introduce yourself, I can rename you.
Okay, I just have my first name under, it's Jan, and my last name is Hickory.
Okay, please go ahead.
Oh, that's all. I don't have anything else, I just had a question.
Oh, I see, okay. Done, done. Great, okay, so I think no other hands raised, so that concludes this portion. Thank you to everybody from the public with us here tonight. Over to you, John.
Okay, thank you, Vivian. So, we'll continue with the, on the agenda. There's no call-up items for us to deal with tonight, so we'll move right into our first public hearing item, which is a concept plan review and comment for proposed mixed-use redevelopment at 2206 Pearl. Review, this is case number LUR2022-00054. And we'll start out with a staff presentation, followed by an applicant comments, if there are any, followed by public comment, and then it'll come back to board now, then, for questions and discussion. So, staff, please move ahead, and I understand Shabnam Vista with us tonight, and this is her last presentation. So, before she disappears off to the East Coast, so I just want to take this opportunity to say, thanks, Shabnam, for all you've done for us over the last couple of years.
Yeah, thanks so much for saying that, Sharon. It's with a heavy heart that we have to inform the board, who may have heard that Shabnam's relocating back to her home city of New York. She's accepted a position as a senior planner with the Department of Economic Development in New York City, but she's been with us for about three and a half years now, and started as an associate planner in our office, and has really risen through the ranks really quickly. So, it has been a real pleasure to watch her grow and serve the community, and we'll miss her very much. Shabnam, I think I speak on behalf of the board that you have a standing invitation here at Planning Board every Tuesday night, whenever you want it. So, it's been a pleasure getting to work with you, and thanks so much for your service to the board, so.
Thanks, Charles, and thanks, John. I'm sad I will never get to do an in-person meeting, but maybe I'll join as an in-person member of the public.
Well, maybe that's a good segue shop into your first item here tonight, so we're gonna, we'll send you out with a bang tonight.
Thank you. So let me go ahead and share my screen. Are you able to see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so my name is Shabnam Vista, senior planner with the Planning and Development Services. Tonight, I will be presenting on a concept plan for a mixed-use redevelopment at 2206 and 2210 Pearl Street. I'll briefly cover the information that's provided in staff's memo, going through the purpose of a concept plan, public notification, the existing site conditions and surrounding context, as well as the project background, and the summary of the proposed project, and lastly, key issues that staff identified for tonight's discussion. The purpose of a concept plan is to determine the general development plan for a particular site and to help identify any key issues in advance of a site review submittal. No formal actions taken on the proposal tonight, and this is a space for the applicants to receive comments from the board staff as well as the public. In terms of the written notification, a written notice was provided consistent with the land use code, and the notice was also posted on the property. The packet includes an attachment with emails from the public that staff received during the review. Majority of the emails were the public voicing some concerns about traffic and access, so just the parking reduction, as well as any overflow in the neighborhood, the density of the proposal, as well as affordability. And I know Planning Board also received a number of comments over the last week regarding the project. Jumping into the project site, the approximately half-acre site is located in the Whittier neighborhood, south of Pearl Street and east of 22nd Street. The site's comprehensive land use designation is high-density residential, which are areas generally located and planned for transit-oriented redevelopment and near-major corridors and services. The intensity in the RH designation is more than 14 dwelling units per acre. In terms of the land use zoning, the site is zoned mixed-use 3, defined as business areas that are changing to a mixture of residential and complementary non-residential retail uses generally within the same building. For this particular site, the surrounding area is characterized by a mixed-use residential and commercial, as well as high-density residential development. To the north of Pearl Street is the Whittier Square condominiums, and that's about a three-story building, three-to-four-story building with 80 units. And then to the south are 1-2-3 residential homes. To the east are some commercial spaces. Immediately across 22nd Street to the west is a residential converted to an office, as well as a multifamily residential building, and then... And then, in terms of the existing site, the site itself contains two commercial uses. They're both characterized under art spaces. And then, there's, on the top right, is the alley that's on the back of the building, so south of the site. And then, currently, there's a lot of surface parking on this site. Other aspects of the transportation context includes a relatively transit-rich area. The site is located right along Pearl Street, where the hop bus line is located, and it's also within walking distance of downtown Boulder. And there are a number of other, you know, local buses that are surrounding the property. There are also a number of on-street bike lanes within easy access of the site, so along Walnut Street, 20th, and Spruce as well. Diving into the proposed project, the applicant is proposing 45 efficiency living units. Efficiency living units is described in the code, is defined in the code, as dwelling units that contain a bathroom and kitchen, but do not exceed a max floor area of 475 square feet. The maximum occupancy per the code is two, two people, for an efficiency living units. Under the mixed-use 3 zoning district, the ELUs are allowed by right if it's less than 40% of total units in the building and/or at least 50% of the floor area of the building is residential uses, and the total floor area of non-residential uses in the building is less than 7,000 square feet. Otherwise, ELUs are permitted through a use review. So, in this case, the applicant will need to apply for use review, along with a site review, when they come in with this proposal before us today. So, in terms of just the stats, so there's 45 ELUs, and they are approximately 300 square feet. The building is three stories tall and will be approximately 38 feet in height, which is the allowed height under MU3. There are 17 regular residential parking spaces in the garage on the ground level. There are, the applicant's also proposing eight tandem spaces and one car-share space, and then there's also 2,000 square feet of commercial space along Pearl Street. Getting into a little bit more detail with the floor plans, this is the ground level floor plan, where you can see the commercial along Pearl Street. There is a plaza to the northwest corner. There is that garage, which is access through the alleyway to the south of the property, where you can see the 17 regular spaces, eight tandem, and then one ride-er space, which is located in the alley around here. There is also a potential dog area for pet relief, and then there is the five units on the ground floor. And then on the second floor, or level two, there's the common plaza spaces, the resident common rooms, as well as 20 efficiency living units. On level three, there are also additional 20 units, a roof deck, and a PV solar awning. The applicant provided some renderings of the project. The first one is the northeast view from Pearl Street, where you can see the commercial along Pearl and the building along the east side. And then there is the southwest corner of 22nd Street and the alley. And then, lastly, the corner of 22nd and Pearl Street. During the review, staff identified three key issues for Planning Board's discussion. The first one is whether the proposed concept plan is preliminarily consistent with the goals and objectives of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. The second one is whether Planning Board has feedback on the proposed parking for the project. And then the last one is, does Planning Board have feedback on the building design and general layout of the project? Diving into the first key issue, at this time, staff finds that the concept plan is preliminarily consistent with many of the goals, objectives, and recommendations of the BBCP, particularly related to housing and mixed-use-related policies. The proposal is for mixed-use building with majority residential, as well as the comp plan identifies encouraging a mix of uses. And then, these are some of the policies that staff has identified. Additional review will be done at site review as well. So, in terms of the second key issue, staff and the applicant would like additional feedback from Planning Board just regarding the proposed parking and the parking reduction. The required parking for efficiency living units in MU3 zone is one per dwelling unit. The applicant is proposing a 64% parking reduction with 17 regular residential units provided where 45 are required, and any parking reduction greater than 50% requires Planning Board approval. The applicant's also proposing eight tandem parking spaces, as well as a car-share space in the alley. The code does not allow tandem spaces or the car-share space to be counted towards the minimum parking requirement. However, the applicant can use it as some of the justification for a larger parking reduction, but that will need to be coupled with a robust transportation management plan, and as well as information just regarding how the tandem parking spaces and car-share space will be operational. And then, lastly, key issue three is regarding the design of the building. So, generally, staff appreciates the site organization and site design with the placement of the uses, as well as the common spaces facing, being south-facing. The uses are appropriate, and the form of the building is generally compatible with the area. However, in terms of building design, the applicant staff would recommend that the applicant refine the building design by exploring ways for roof articulation and pitched roofs to avoid the flat roof expanses, and then consider a redesign for some of the balconies, especially the wraparound ones, so they create more functionality for the tenants and create a more cohesive look for the building. In our review, staff recommended to, staff recommends to Planning Board and the applicant that the concept plan be brought before Design Advisory Board after the site review application is filed with the city. That concludes the presentation, and let me know if you have any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Okay, thank you. I just have a couple of questions on the design of the building. Maybe you'll tell me to ask the applicant, but the first is, those wraparound porches, are those also the walkways to the doors of the apartments? That was a little unclear from the drawing.
Sure, let me just share my screen again. I think the floor plans do a better job kind of showing those. So, they're not part of the elevated walkway that requires, that provides access to the units.
Okay, thank you. And then my only second question, and then I'll be done, is those ELUs on the first floor, on the ground floor, excuse me, the back of those open, are, look, are they up against the, I can't really tell what that is. Is that the garage? It's just a little hard to tell.
Yeah.
Which then leads to a question of, are there windows or just the door into the ED-ELU?
I think that would be a better question for the applicant, but just looking at the plans, I think it is up against what is going to be the garage, or perhaps the bike storage.
Okay, I'll also ask the applicant, thanks so much, those are my questions. Did we lose John? Is he there? So, ML, and then Laura, and then George, and when John comes back, he'll take control again.
Thank you. Shabnam, I just have one question that the public brought up, and maybe this has substance, and maybe it doesn't, but is there a known water supply issue in this area that would be impacted by the number of dwelling units?
I'm not aware of that at this time. Um, I'm not aware of that at this time, um, I think that. Perhaps either the applicant can answer that, or it's something that would um. Staff would look at in detail during. The site review application.
Yeah, I think talking with engineering ML, um, we're not aware of any capacity issues in the area, as a matter of fact, most of our infrastructure planning um has been done. You know, fairly in lockstep with our land use planning and um max to max projections for the city, so. Um, I, I wouldn't be aware of any capacity issues, but maybe their engineer can speak to that.
Uh, yeah, this is just something that came up to the public, so I, I didn't see anything in the application, I thought I'd. I'd check it out in case there was something lurking, but thank you, Charles and Shabnam for your answers.
Okay, sorry, I got uh some interruption here, I just uh got knocked out. Laura, go ahead.
Thank you, um, so that issue that ML was uh mentioning was on my list as well. I'll just, just for the sake of staff who are on the call, it was a resident who emailed and then they said that somebody in their neighborhood was told by the city of Boulder Utilities Department. That due to overdevelopment in that neighborhood, the city's main sewer line in the area was having difficulty supporting the amount of sewage, so it was a. Um, that was, I think that's what ML you were referencing, that it was a sewage issue. Um, so I'll just, uh, it, it sounds like we don't have an answer to that, that we're not aware of any issues, but it's something that you, okay. Um, I did have a couple of questions, um, Shabnam, in one part of the staff comments, it talks about. Um, that the applicant should be uh improving building legibility, and that was a new term for me, uh, could you explain what is building legibility?
Sure, um. I can, I can try. Uh, building legibility is. Just how defined the building, building looks um along the street face. Charles, if you wanted to add something to that.
Yeah, I think um, you know, in the most rudimentary terms, it's really about knowing what it is that you're looking at, um. You know, is it, does it read as a residential building purely, does it, does it read as a mixed-use building, I think the staff comment was, you know, if. These are gonna be retail spaces, they should be um better presented as retail spaces. Um, I think there were some ambiguity on, you know, looking like office. Um, and the way that you get it, some of those things are better pronounced entryways, a more meaningful sign program. Um, so I think those were some of the things that we're gonna try to develop with the applicant as it moves into site review.
Thank you, it's very, very helpful, oh, and by the way, Shabnam, great presentation, I forgot to say that, but I meant to start with that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, my next question is, uh, you know, you said that thirty-eight feet is the height limit in the MU three. And that you're in uh encouraging the applicant to explore pitched roofs. Would that require a height exemption, or would that, I know that's something that we're considering under the site review. Uh, um, uh, update is to allow a little bit more flexibility with that when it's done for the purpose of having pitched roofs. So would, would this applicant have to wait until those criteria are final to take advantage of that? Or is it something they could do even if they bring this back before those criteria are final?
I think if they um, the criteria that which applies depends on when the applicant will have submitted for the site review. And, and in terms of just the pitch counting towards the height, there, you know, there, there are ways to modify the height through the site reviews, that is a possibility if it. Um, if it can result in better design, um however. Um. Yeah, so I would say it's, there is a possibility that there could be a height modification, just. Um, if there are pitch roof and if the applicant decides to exceed the thirty-eight feet.
Okay, thank you. Um, next question, within the applicant statement on page twenty-seven. It said something about exceeding the allowable density from twenty dwelling units to twenty-two point five. Is that like a remnant of something that has changed, because I didn't see anything in the staff presentation about exceeding the allowable density? Uh, Shabnam, I think you're on.
Sorry, I was muted, sorry. Just pulling up the intensity standards. So in MU three, um. In the intensity, intensity standards, there are no number of dwelling units per acre in our table. Um. It's, it's the intensity's driven through the FAR for the site, which is one. Um. And so I'm, I'm not aware of the twenty-two point, point two dwelling units.
Okay, uh, it sounds like maybe that section in the applicant's statement um was incorrect or. Sounds like it's not an issue.
Yeah, it's not an issue.
Okay.
They are in the, the concept plan and, and site review. It triggers a threshold if there is a twenty plus dwelling units. Um, but other than that, yeah, we don't foresee an issue in terms of intensity with what's proposed.
Okay, thank you. Um, I, I just wanna ask one more question. So I did go visit the site this morning and walk around and look at the parking situation, and I was there at like eight forty in the morning, and so. You know, that's when a lot of people, if they're going to work, have probably left for work, and if they were parked on the street, have probably moved a vehicle. But there probably were fifty or sixty empty parking spaces within a one-block radius of this site. And I guess I'm, I'm just curious whether staff have any knowledge about. You know, how that changes throughout the day, like, is the parking really crowded at night when everybody's home, or do you have information or data about? When, what times of day parking might be a problem?
Um, at this time, we don't, um. I believe there is a trip generation. Report or it will be required during the site review and um transportation will take a closer look at that.
Okay, thank you.
George.
Um, I think most of my questions have been answered, uh, one quick question. Regarding the uh part of the building that is on the fifteen-foot setback. I'm noticing from the floor plans, especially the units in the center of that area. I, I'm just curious what they're facing. Um, cuz it, it seems like there are windows just out on that setback, is there another setback on the other side of the property? So this is a wider area, I'm just trying to get a sense of what an occupant might be looking at.
Um, you're referring to the units that are gonna be along the east side of the property?
Yes.
Alright, okay. Um. I'm not aware of what that set, setback is on, on the lot adjacent to it, um. I mean, right now, the applicant is showing that fifteen-foot setback with um, I think some. See if there's some landscaping.
Yeah, I see there's a dog room that they have.
Yeah, and then with the bike.
I was, I was more curious on what, what is adjacent to this property relative to, you know, how close up that is to um. Uh, open space on the other property. Uh, we don't have to answer it now, I'm, it's more just a curiosity, and then along that line. I see that one of the, I see that the corner balcony wraps around and actually encroaches into that fifteen-foot setback, what? What, can you, can you talk about that encroachment, is that, is that permissible, or is that something that they need to get an exception on?
Yeah, so setbacks can be modified through the site review process, so again, that's something we'd take a closer look at during. Um, site review.
Great, and I.
So the property, sorry, the property adjacent.
The balconies at the rear also looks like, are they also encroaching on a potential setback, they are?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's something that would need to be.
And that's the alley to the rear as well.
Agree to, okay, and modified, okay, thank you.
You're, you're talking about the east side of the building there?
East and, east and on the alley, so, so on the east. There's a, there's, there's a balcony which wraps around, staff's already talked about the wraparound balcony is not being that practical, but. Um, that, that encroaches on the fifteen-foot setback, and then on the rear on the alley, it looks like all the balconies encroach on the alley setback.
Yeah, I can't, I, so in walking along this this morning, like on Pearl Street. The current building is right smack up against another building, like, there's literally no separation, you can't walk between them, they're like built on top of each other. So, and I don't remember if that building was one story or two stories.
It's, it's all one story there.
Is it one story, okay? So, there's no units on the first floor there, but the second floor would be overlooking that building, I guess. Is that, was that your question, George, of what they're overlooking?
My, my question was directed around the encroachment of the setback, I think Shabnam answered it, thanks Laura.
Okay, Mark.
Uh, thanks, and. Uh, again, I'm operating from an iPad for the last couple of weeks and iPad only, so I, I, switching back and forth between. Packet and Zoom meeting and stuff is not as easy as a big dual-monitor desktop, so if I've asked my questions and they're addressed in the packet, my apologies. Um. This site specifically is not located within any of our. Neighborhood parking districts, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
But is uh to the south, is that portion of Wal- is any portion of Walnut? Or even a little farther south towards Canyon, is that a parking district?
Um, let me take a quick look here at our mapping. So, uh, the parking district there, which is the Caged Parking District, um. Ends along right before twenty-first, Pearl. And then there isn't anything along Walnut until um. Until about Eighteenth Street.
Okay, going west, okay, all right, um. Uh, and in the staff uh commentary to the applicant, uh. Shabnam, I was, I appreciated you, um. And again, I, I don't have the, I can't switch over to the wording this moment, um. You referred to uh some principles for parking, separated, unbundled, managed and paid. And I just want to make sure I understand that that is a staff discretionary. Uh, request. Um, based on the parking reduction, but request, but is not a. Man, is that mandated, or is that just as staff's discretion? Um, that you're requesting some principles be applied?
Just taking a look here, I think um. The applicant using those principles, you know, would need to demonstrate that. Um, they have a feasible parking reduction that does not negatively impact um the site and the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay. All right, but it's not, it, it's, we don't have a code threshold or anything. That says, gee, if you're going for, you know, greater than fifty-five percent reduction in parking, then. This particular uh, these particular items have to be applied.
No, there's no regulatory threshold for that market, it's, it's a great question, it's really more of a policy direction, and we've seen it applied. Um, in projects like this, um, you know, when, when folks are requesting a parking reduction, so I think that's the spirit it's born out of. When we have managed districts like you'd see out at thirty Pearl, um, that's when we see it really put into motion. Um, in some of the form-based code documents, but in a um. Intel project like this, it um was really suggested to help manage the, the parking reduction that's being proposed. Uh, I will also say that we had some questions about parking management overall on the site that will need to vet uh with the applicant through the site review process if it moves in that direction. Um, so what, we'd like to hear from the applicant tonight to learn some of their parking management strategies.
Right, great, that's, that's very helpful, uh, Charles and Shabnam on that, that, but that, that does clarify that for me. Um, and I'll just say, I, I appreciate the focus on uh ways. Of accommodating uh both the parking reduction and mitigating uh a parking reduction. And uh, I just wanted to make sure I understood the uh, whether that was a requirement or not, so I'm not questioning, I'm, I'm all for it, but. I just wanted to understand it, thank you.
Okay, I, I have a couple of questions, and I hope they're not repeats of. Of what Sarah and ML already asked, and I, and I missed while I was bumped out of the meeting, but I'll ask them anyway. One is, uh, I'd, and appreciate staff's uh opinion regarding. The uniformity of the type of apartments and efficiencies that are being proposed here, and uh. Wha- what, what staff's opinion is regarding having all efficiencies versus having a, a variety of. How, of apartment sizes uh in this project?
I'm sorry, John, you cut off towards the end, could you repeat that?
I'm, I'm wondering what, what staff's opinion is regarding the uniformity of the. Uh, living units that are being proposed here, uh, as opposed to having a variety of, of sizes and types of living units.
Sure, I think um. Efficiency living units allow for um. Increased units on the site, which is um. You know, part of the housing goals to have additional kind of housing stock as well as um. Housing stock that's more affordable, uh. And so I think staff, you know, i- it's supportive of the, the. All you, uh, efficiency living units up on this project.
Okay, thanks.
And we also have Michelle Allen from Housing, Michelle, I don't know if you wanna do that, just as far as the. Policy underpinnings go of supporting a diversity of different housing typologies, but um.
Yeah, I'd be interested to hear Michelle's thoughts. You're muted.
There we go. Um. So yeah, the comp plan does um. Look, is looking for a diversity of housing types, but they don't necessarily need to be um vertically mixed, they can be horizontally mixed. This isn't a huge project of um these small units, so. So, you know, we don't have a, a ton of these micro-units in the city at this point, although there seems to be more and more being proposed. So I think from a housing perspective, they're desirable, especially at that location.
So, so it's your opinion that there's a, a, a large demand for this sort of housing that's being proposed here? Does that, I understand that.
I, I think that's probably true, John, um, but um. I also think that they, again, did a market study, remember, we talked about market studies at our last meeting. And so the developer would have found that there is a, a decent demand for this type of housing. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right, any other questions of staff? Okay, well, let's uh, let's move to the applicant's presentation.
So we've gone ahead and promoted the applicants, but uh please let us know if. Your entire team is not there. Who will be presenting, we have Ross Holbrook, Lee Payne, and Danica, and you should be able to share your screen.
Thank you, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, great, and we can see you.
Good.
Thanks, Lee.
Um, Ross is on uh the phone here, I do have our PowerPoint here to share, so I'll be running that, um, but Ross is gonna lead our, our introductions here, take it away. Let me just make sure I can get my screen shared here. Can you guys see a intro side with Stoke Investment Group at the top? No. How about now?
It's coming.
Yes, we can see it, thank you.
Sure, go ahead, Ross.
Uh, good evening, um, my name is Ross Holbrook, I'm the managing partner at Stoke Investment Group, and thank you for the opportunity to prevent. Present uh twenty-two oh six Pearl. Go to the next slide. Uh, Stoke Investment Group, uh, develops attainable, sustainable and healthy housing for today's middle income demographic. Uh, we submitted this concept in May of last year and have made a lot of refinements and really have appreciated the collaborative process with staff and stakeholders. And we're excited to, to move the project forward. I think when you, you look at the housing landscape nationally, uh, something that we think about a lot is how the middle income demographic is vastly underserved. Uh, when you look at subsidized or capital A affordable housing, uh, that typically only reaches up to about sixty percent of area median income. Whereas traditional market rate, housing is, reaches down to about a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Uh, and then when you look at the renter population in the U.S., the eighty percent AMI is, is the largest and so also the, the most underserved. So we fill that need, uh, targeting young professionals, uh, service workers and those that, that work in the area. Yeah, if you go back, sorry, Lee, you're jumping ahead a little bit. Um, so Stoke Investment Group, uh, we, Matt and myself, uh, were actually roommates at the University of Colorado. I think about four blocks from the, the project. Uh, funny enough, uh, so we started Stoke Investment Group about five years ago. We're using a local team, DGJ. I think they've been in Boulder for about fifty years or more. Uh, and then Danica Powell with Tressel. Unfortunately, she's, uh, fighting COVID at the moment. Uh, so we wish her the best, but, uh, she sends her regards. We hope for a, a speedy recovery. Go to the next slide. Uh, so we believe that there's a housing, health and carbon crisis. Uh, our goal is to, to do more and, and not be reliant on subsidies. And therefore we're focused on market rate or non-deed restricted middle income housing, uh, something that we call naturally occurring or attainable by design, by building smaller units. Uh, next slide. From a sustainability perspective, our goal is zero carbon. Uh, we achieve this through a reduction-first approach. Obviously using less materials with smaller units. Uh, we combine that with a deep focus on efficiency. And in order to be zero carbon, uh, we are all electric and expect to utilize a mini microgrid to integrate solar PV, charging and storage. Residents and guests will also be encouraged to avoid single occupancy vehicle use through taking advantage of our bicycle storage and repair facility, car caring program as well as proximity to just about everything. Uh, we really think this is a great node of our, or core of the fifteen minute city, uh, that we, uh, believe in. Next slide. So how, how do we accomplish this? Uh, we use innovative design and technology on our, on our units. Units are, are smaller, right around three hundred square feet, but satisfy the needs and wants of, of the residents. Uh, each unit has a kitchen and bathroom, just like a normal unit, but in a more efficient footprint. And the other thing that we do is the residents not only have, you know, access to their unit and the privacy that that provides, but also a larger home, uh, in terms of communal spaces, both interior and exterior. Um, the units are furnished, which I'll get into in a second. And most importantly, we, we try and locate our projects in neighborhoods that already have the amenities so that we don't have to add the cost of those into the project and therefore, uh, increase the, the rents that we must charge. Next, next page. So one of the pieces of technology we use is a, a company out of, uh, uh, called Ori Living. They manufacture essentially robotic furniture. Uh, this is an example of one. Fortunately, we can't use video, uh, with these presentations, but it's, it's really cool. You could check them out, ori living dot com. Uh, but essentially creates a, a one bedroom and a studio, uh, you know, a three hundred square foot space feels much more, uh, livable and, and, and larger. Uh, and, and, uh, provides, you know, a, a better lifestyle for, for the tenant. Next, next slide. So we really see our residents walking and biking to, to work, uh, and, or, and or working from the property. Um, I think historically most attainable or, or affordable housing is not necessarily proximate to these things. Uh, things like jobs and fun and, and restaurants and grocery stores. And so residents are really forced to own a car. And so we're providing a, a different type of housing that is filling a, a need for those who, you know, want to live car free. In terms of, uh, outreach to both our, our potential residents and, and the community, our, our focus is really around our residents. We've done extensive market research, interviews and, and focus groups. And I think, you know, we really found that the location and walkability and even the minimalistic design is, is really attractive. Uh, but more importantly, we've met and spoken and corresponded with about nine neighbors and, and really tried to listen. I think when we started this company, this company, we really wanted to step away from our projects more and more proud. And one way we're doing that is, is really trying to listen to all stakeholders, our residents, our investors, our community and, and the environment. So we've added more parking. We listened to the feedback or perhaps we're really looking to be a some parking uh, strategy. I think one of the things I wanted to touch on uh, ahead of time was, was tandem parking.
Um, the parking.
Hey, John, excuse me. Sorry, John, John, are, are you, um, can you mute?
Oh, you.
Yeah, I was getting a little bit of feedback. Well, thank you, Mark. So, so, uh, tandem parking, how does it work? Uh, parking will be undone, unbundled. And if a resident chooses to pay for a, a park, a tandem parking space, they'll receive a, what's called a parking roommate. And, and therefore the burden of communication and coordination is between them. Our, our hope is that these cars are, are not used very frequently and maybe only on the weekends. And so if a resident needs parking, you know, and, and that doesn't want to rely on that communication, they can lease a non-tendon tandem space. And those spaces obviously would be at a premium. Uh, the other thing that we're excited to talk about is, uh, our conversations with Colorado Car Share, which is a, a local Boulder company. I'm sure you guys are aware of. Uh, they have interest in locating a, a vehicle on the property, which I think provides a, a community benefit for the residents, but also the, the neighborhood at, at large. In terms of, uh, the neighborhood context, uh, next slide, Lee, um, you know, it's a very walkable and, and bikeable, uh, area and um, we're excited to, to locate this type of project and this type of housing in, in this, this neighborhood that's so proximate to everything and, and is walkable. Um, I'll pass that on to, uh, Lee Payne. She did. Thank you.
Thank you, Ross. Um, my name is Lee Payne. I'm an owner and the director of architecture here at DTJ Design Boulder. Um, thank you all for your time to, tonight and the ongoing discussion with staff as, as Ross has mentioned since we've had since May. I'm very excited to, uh, present this project to you tonight. Um, I think it's a great value. It's a very valuable opportunity for, for our community as, as Ross has kind of filled in the blanks. Um, unfortunately, a lot of my, uh, presentation was uh, discussed already. So I'll try to focus in on maybe addressing some of the concerns and comments from staff. I think Shabnam and and the discussion really had touched on the major issues. As, as was mentioned, this is a very transit-rich site. The configuration of the project, uh, has been mentioned already. Um, units with really kind of a small scale residential front yard feel over on Twenty Second. A very, very strong emphasis to public, uh, space here associated with the commercial use as well as the resident use, um, facing Northwest or, or West on Pearl Street. We really want to focus on having people use the stairs in the communal spaces within the project as a way to move up and down within the building versus a traditional kind of elevator core. Uh, high density of public bike parking spaces. So twenty-four primarily focused at the corners of the building or, uh, residential entry areas. Every unit will contain a bike parking space within it. And then there's an additional twenty-three bike parking spaces located within the secure enclosure for the garage. Um, this is not something that we want to, um, tuck away in a far corner or back behind the transformer, the, the bike parking and the bike maintenance and the access to it for the residents is something we really want to celebrate and have that be part of their journey, um, every day as Ross was mentioning. Um, the commentary along the street, uh, these units here, I did want to mention to, I'm sorry, I forgot the, the woman who had mentioned this. We have begun looking at relocating this restroom configuration for these units to the back wall, separating the units from the garage to really get the whole end of these units to have a lot more glass and light into them. So that, that is actually something we have been studying. Um, as was mentioned, the second and third level of the buildings really celebrating the journey to your unit from this grand staircase that's oriented towards Pearl Street. The common room here, that's a place for together with friends or even guests, uh, outside of your unit. The southwest oriented common plaza and raised gardens for the community. Again, not only does this have really great solar access, I think it allows the architecture of the building to be primarily justified towards the east, which is an existing two-story building and the north, which is Pearl Street. And then we basically are breaking down the mass of the building as we're moving south towards the adjacent neighborhood. Uh, again, the massing, um, we've kind of talked about that. We have started looking at some of the wraparound conditions primarily on this corner. There are a few spots where the deck, uh, being an extension of the front part of the deck does allow for western views and western sunlight. And I think that's very, very important for units that face north. So we're, we're excited to integrate, uh, that design thinking with staff's commentary. Um, we have started looking at some of the roof articulation here. I think that's a great design comment um, that we're going to begin investigating. I, I am sensitive to the, um, provisions in the code to exceed the thirty-eight foot height to have pitched roofs. I think there's definitely a scale to Pearl Street that we need to respect versus just forcing in a, a reform that feels more residential. But, um, we're very early in the design process and, process and are very much looking forward to, um, that dialogue. Let me see if I can, uh, one of the other comments, we got two were balconies. And we're not looking for a modification to the setback. We're looking, uh, at the code section nine point seven point three. A and G allow balconies and cantilever decks to project into those setbacks. And that's what we're showing at those two conditions. Again, this, uh, really communal space with great solar exposure. The celebrated journey up the stair with the orientation towards Pearl Street and really the strong connection to our more, uh, architectural typology along Pearl Street. But stepping the mass of the building down as we're moving towards the site in the neighborhood and really giving the feeling of one-story residential units on Twenty Second Street here with front yards. Um, the character of the building is, um, very much early. We are thinking something with natural materials. Um, as Ross, Ross has mentioned, carbon footprints are a very, very important part of our material selection. But obviously the use of masonry is a nod to both the existing, uh, uh, neighborhood context and historic Pearl Street, I, I think is in our future. Um, we did not get these in, in your packet. So these are supplemental to what you've seen, but we did take a stab at locating the building uh, in street view, um, just so you can start seeing the scale relationship to the building and some of the, um, uh, existing street context. Another view a little bit closer, again, really celebrating that face of the building that's pointing towards the Pearl Street Mall. And then a view back down, looking west on Pearl Street, uh, with the adjacent two-story building just to our east here. That's it. I did want to mention, uh, before I ended the presentation here, as Ross has mentioned, we've had I, multiple meetings with staff. I cannot recall any engineering comments come up, uh, during our referral or, uh, dialogue with, with the city. Unfortunately, our civil engineer is not on the call tonight and can't answer any of those specific questions. We weren't aware of any issues that came up during our, our, uh, engagement with the city since May, but JVA has a very, very long and rich history of doing work in Boulder. And I'm sure we will definitely get into the particulars of all the engineering as we, as we get further into the process. Thanks again.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions of the applicant, George?
Yeah, um, uh, thanks, guys. Great presentation. Um, quick question. Ross, this is, uh, for you. You, you pitched this development as sort of a, a middle income, you know, trying to get that one twenty to eighty per, uh, eighty percent of AMI. So what do you pro forma the rents on these units to be?
So, so one thing that we, we look at, um, that's more attributable to affordable housing, uh, is CHAFAs, uh, annual rent uh, maximums based on incomes in, in the various counties. And so that's usually how we kind of target where our price point is, is, is really trying to meet the, the need with that eighty to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI.
Got it. So, so what would like, what are you performing the average rent per unit on the, on the site to be?
Um, you know, it, it, it changes over time, right? Because the, as wages increase, it's increased. John, I, I hate to, it seems like the feedback is like.
Oh, John, I, yeah, John, I think it's your, um, you're echoing, uh, because you're, you're needed to be on mute.
Sorry, it, basically it depends, right? It depends on what the annual numbers are based on wage growth essentially. Uh, it's typically census data or, or where CHAFA gets it. I, I don't know, but it's basically how subsidized, you know, capital A affordable prices, their, their units. But these will be market rate. So it's, it's just basically just a framework of where, where.
Yeah, I understand there may be market rate, but you, you must have a pro forma on what you've performed at these units to be at when they open, let's say, three years from now.
Yeah.
What's the average rent?
Yeah, three years from now.
Well, what, okay, well, put it this way. What would the average rent be today? In order for us to understand projecting out three years, I'm just trying to understand how this fits in with the one twenty to eighty, eighty AMI. And that would be helpful because you, you must have a, I mean, you're the developers. You must have a sense of what you're actually going to rent these things for.
Yeah, I think we do. I mean, there, there's, uh, you know, some volatility in, in the market in terms of construction costs, which hopefully have, have, uh, maybe, uh, reduced over the last few months, but it's been a, a pretty tricky market to, to price. So I, I can't tell you with any sort of certainty, other than, you know, really just showing you where uh, we look at that data, which, uh, I'm happy to provide. It's, it's CHAFA that, uh, produces the, you know, rent maximum per income.
Would, do, do you guys have a similar pro- do you have any ELU projects now that you have that are constructed already?
I'm not in Boulder, no.
Not in Boulder. But you don't, I mean, you, you, you're saying you don't, you don't know what you're performing the average rents to be here?
It is actually in the packet. I mean, maybe the applicant doesn't remember putting it in there, but it's on page twenty-nine in the packet.
Yeah, no, we, we provided a range at that, that, at that time, but in three years, I, I can't tell you what it's going to be. I can tell you that we plan to, you know, pay the in lieu fees. So if, as far as I know, I'm not sure that you guys can regulate what we.
No, no, I'm not asking you, uh, not, we can't, we can't regulate market rate units. I, you, you're just, you pitched your whole comp, you pitched your whole process as this filling a gap in the eight, hundred and twenty AMI. And I'm trying to get information to understand whether that's actually going to happen. Um, so you, that's my point. You, you must know, because you're pitching us that it's eighty to a hundred and twenty percent. I mean, I can, I can back into those numbers myself, knowing the eighty to a hundred and twenty percent, what the rents would need to be. So I'm just trying to understand whether that's actually going to happen.
Yeah, I, I think it's, uh, as, um, sorry, Laura, you, you mentioned in, in our packet, I think we said seventeen hundred to twenty-three hundred was, was kind of the rough numbers. Um, again, that's based on, I think it typically comes out in April or May. And so I hesitate to tell, tell you what it's going to be because, again, we'll have, you know, two or three updates as, as this project is, is built.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Okay, Sarah.
Uh, thank you. And just, uh, just to follow up on George's question, that range is exactly what an ELU in Boulder goes for. So it's, you know, I don't know whether you'd call that organically affordable, because I don't think there's anyone who would argue that two thousand dollars for a three hundred square foot apartment is affordable, but nonetheless. So I have a couple of questions that have to do with because you've mentioned, uh, that you're going to be installing robotic furniture and uh, but handing over management of the tandem parking spaces to the people who co-sign for the spaces or sign for the spaces. It's unclear to me whether you. It's unclear to me whether you are planning to manage this development once it's built or whether your plan is to sell it to somebody else for their management of it. Um, because I, I just, I'm just very curious about that. Because like, what happens if, if uh the bed, the robotic bed breaks, who fixes that?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. So our, our plan, as with all of our projects, will, it will be professionally managed by a, a third-party property manager. And so things like broken beds, uh, although they have a great warranty and, and the capabilities, because we actually went and looked and touched and feel uh these things. Uh, you know, tho- that will be solved by the property manager, as will the coordination of, of parking as well, if, if there's an issue.
Okay, so that your plan is to hold on to the product, but it'll be property managed by somebody else?
Correct, yeah, we, we don't have, um, you know, it, I, I can't tell you that we won't sell it and I can't tell you that we'll own it forever, but I, we are absolutely biased to own this long term.
Um, and that I, so thank you for clarifying about the E L U's on the first floor. Um, it did seem like all of the E L U's ascend, except for the ones on the ends, essentially have one source of light. Um, is, i- it's a little hard to tell from the drawings, I realize they're preliminary. But is that accurate? Because uh, that would be concerning to me, that just the light coming from the front of the apartment is it? And then it's a, it's a three-sided, three-sided walls with no windows.
Right, well, um, there are corner units where we're looking at um manipulating that. But I would think of these, these units as much more like a bedroom. You're going to be living in the part, part of the unit that has the windows, the back where the bathroom is that there's no windows. It's much more like a typical apartment building where individual rooms have, you know, one window on one side of it. Places where we can capitalize on corner conditions, we're absolutely looking at.
Okay, I think, thank you, that, those were my questions, thank you.
M L.
Thank you, John. And um, thank you applicants for your, for your presentation. Um, I, I'm going to start with questions about parking, just kind of following um staff's key issues in that sequence. So I've got a couple of questions about, about uh parking. Um, where did the people who work in the commercial buildings, in the little shops, where, where do those people work, uh, park?
We're, we're following the development code guidelines that say at a certain depth, the parking demand for the commercial is zero.
No, I understand the regulation. I'm thinking actuality and of course, just looking at a lot of the concerns in the neighborhood about parking. I'm thinking about the people that work there, because I, I see the options you provided for people who live there. Right, you've got the uh electric bikes or bikes, storage and um the e-car and that sort of thing. But the people that work there, you're looking at um small businesses. And um, I'm guessing, you know, the shop people are going to arrive at work from somewhere and potentially going to need to park. Where do you see that happening?
Well, it's a little bit speculative. I don't know that they would necessarily be driving to work. Um, there is a district uh west of this for Caged, you know, the former Techline building that has a, a large density. It's, it's a little bit speculative, they might be taking mass transit to the, to the site. I, I, I really wouldn't know. We don't have parking on site for the employees, they may be finding different methods to be able to get to work. They might even work, they might even live in the building without a car, who knows?
Yeah, I'm just wondering conceptually if that, if there was something out there thinking about that. Um, thank you for that answer. Um, the um, you talk about alternatives to the auto are promoted by site design. Are those car share and the bike parking options and that kind of thing? Is that what you mean by alternatives to the auto within the site plan? Or, or are there others besides those two?
You, you've talked about some ideas, Ross, you want to take this one?
I, I'm not sure I've, I fully got your, your question, I, I apologize, but um you're, you're asking if there's alternative uh transportation?
This is, this is the language that is in, in your information. It says that there are, are alternatives to the auto and they're promoted by the site design. And so I'm curious what, in addition to the car share and the bike parking that's provided? And tandem to that, you said there's bike parking in the actual units. And I'm looking at the plant and I don't really see a how, where you're thinking that people are going to park their bike inside the unit? So if you can just expand on, we don't have a car, how do we live there?
Sure, I think walkability is number one. I mean, if, if we think about where the project is and what is in, within a walking distance, uh, both in terms of jobs, but also grocery stores and uh many other things as well. Uh, definitely focusing, you know, the design around bikeability and, and the ease of, you know, whether that's e-bikes or commuter bikes or bikes for recreation. Um, in terms of uh, you know, parking a bicycle within the unit, we found that a lot of residents are worried about bike theft. Uh, obviously, that's an issue in this, in the city. And so for those that have, you know, nicer bikes or worried about, you know, their commuting uh capabilities, uh, they can locate their bike in, in the, in the unit itself. And we actually have some cool, we don't, we can't share with you now, but we have some cool ways of how to store those, those bicycles. Uh, additionally, the, the Colorado CarShare option is, is great. And if you look, I don't know if, if you all are familiar with it, but the price point of, of that membership is, is very, very reasonable and, and a pretty amazing opportunity. Something we worry about is how one of our residents may go up to the mountains to go for a hike uh and or a, a bike ride. And, and they provide, you know, cars with ski racks and bike racks and all those things uh very economically.
Yeah, and as, as Ross said, the, the, this kind of resident is very, very proud of their bikes.
Right, right.
And uh, you know, we want to provide that security within the unit versus having it in a mall stored on the deck. Um, I don't know if Shabnam can share with you our slideshow, but slide six of twenty in our presentation shows where we're concepting a vertical storage component for the bike too. So we're definitely trying to integrate that into the unit design versus it just being a complete afterthought. I mean, uh, like, like Ross said, the, this, this is their, this is their car.
So I'm getting the idea that the plans that we're seeing um in the architectural set, there's a lot of um sort of technology that's going in to make those really livable, like the way the bed elevates and what you're talking about for the bike storage and all. It's not all apparent just by the floor plan. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's actually pretty simple technology, at least the, how the bed is operated. But I don't think we're able to share a, a website, but worry, worryliving.com, if you scroll through, you'll, you'll get it in, in no time. Uh, but the bicycle storage is, is, I would say low tech, it's just cool design.
Right, I, all I'm saying is um, it's beyond the simplicity of the plan. You really are attending to some of these um details of livability in around three hundred square feet, which is like, what, two-thirds of a two-car garage, which is pretty, pretty small. But it's not, um, it's not just here's the floor plan and it's the square footage. I, I appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, and I actually, I actually think it's pretty inventive to, you know, provide the units furnished.
Right.
A pretty awesome thing.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, John, you might be on mute.
Okay, try it now. Can you hear me now? Okay, go ahead, Laura.
Thank you, I have just a couple of questions. Um, first of all, thank you to Lee, uh, Lee and Ross for your presentation, very helpful. Um, looking forward to seeing the site review. Uh, I do have a couple of questions about the um car share and the Northwest Corner Plaza. So first for the car share, so it's a third-party company. And so the app, the, your tenants, it sounds like could choose to become members of this third-party car share company that would park a car at your site. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, our T D M plan will get into the details, but actually just talked to uh Peter, the uh CEO of Colorado CarShare uh today, in fact. And um, you know, I think it's, it's to be determined in terms of how the structure works, but absolutely, you know, our residents would have access to using that car. Uh, not exclusively necessarily, because I think one of the things that they want to do is provide that value to the surrounding community. And in fact, I think locationally, they have one at the Chamber on Folsom and then maybe one near fifteenth. So this is a, a really great site for them. Uh, both, not only for our residents, but also for the, the community as well.
Okay, I just want to flag that if your T D M plan relies heavily on a lot of our residents are going to use car share, then we would probably want more details about that at site review. And I would be very excited to hear more about that. Um, like, how are they going to get to the car that they're trying to rent? And what if somebody already has that car for the weekend? How do they get a different car and then that kind of thing? Um, and then the Northwest Corner Plaza, I know that you'll have more detail about that at site review, but uh it sounds like that is intended to be primarily for the retail space. So like, would you have some kind of, are you envisioning some kind of seating there? Or, or what's your vision for that plaza at this point?
Go ahead, Lee.
Um, I think it's a great place for people to meet up. Um, you know, this synergy between the residential use and the commercial, I think that's a great spot for it. Um, you bring up a great point, we want flexibility, but I think staff made a good comment about, you know, let's figure out a way to separate that space from the, the public um sidewalk. How, whether we do that through planters or something that might be more fixed and then there's a combination of movable components, we'll, we'll just investigate it. My vision is that it is a place for, for seating for people to gather, sit in the sun.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, just to follow up on uh George's point, I also was curious about your, your rental pricing. And I think in the packet, it does say seventeen hundred to twenty-six hundred is uh eighty percent to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI right now. Um, but I guess my question is more around how, are you planning to maintain that for as long as you own the building? And if you sell the building, would that continue to be? Um, is that somehow deed restricted that this, this building targets that AMI range? Or it's just that is what you, as the owners intend to do? And if you sell it, that could go away?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a good question. Um, these are, are not deed restricted, they are market rate. But again, affordable by the, the fact that they're smaller, especially in this location, especially furnished. Um, but yeah, I, I have no control over uh, uh whoever uh may purchase the, the asset and, and what they decide to do. Um, though, you know, it's, it's clear our, our values are trying to provide, you know, middle-income housing within that range, so.
Okay, so you expect it to fluctuate with the market, basically?
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, there's supply and demand factors, but there's also, you know, wage growth uh within that specific demographic too, that are kind of our framework for, for pricing these units.
Thank you.
Let's see, Mark, go ahead.
Hi, um, so uh I, I also uh, I'm kind of following up on both uh M L and Laura's uh questions and, and in my uh reading of the packet, and maybe I didn't read it correctly, but it seems different than your presentation. So I just want to clarify a couple of points here. Can you tell me the total number of uh long-term bike spaces that you're planning on, if you could just tell me that number again?
Just a moment.
Because in the, in the packet, I read it as somewhere in the twenties and the, in the presentation, I think you said somewhere in the sixties.
Sixty-eight, I think, is what we're showing on our submittal. So one in each unit at forty-five plus an additional twenty-three for residents.
Okay, and those are secured. And is there a portion of those, all of those, that would be uh charging ready?
Uh, we haven't talked about that, but I think it's probably inevitable. And in fact, the city standards for public bike parking say it should be accommodated, so I think that's a good idea.
Okay, um, all right, so, but at the moment, you don't have a number of those that would be electrified or ready to electrify?
Not yet.
Okay. Um, and I want to acknowledge, there's always the tension at concept review. You don't want to do too much and present something and then have various interested parties provide input. At the same time, uh, you, you've got to provide enough detail that we get a feel, and I think that's uh, I, I sense M L was struggling a little bit with that, as I did in the floor plan and, and layout, storage, et cetera. Um, on the car, on the car parking, uh, the packet, I think, had three or four spaces as uh, as charging. When it was constructed, you would have, uh, they would be electrified and some additional small portion as electrified, ready, as, have those numbers changed?
They have, they have not currently, it is going to be a proportion of the total that's provided. But as you know, we're showing one, two, three, four, five is EV ready and three additional is EV installed.
Uh huh, okay, five and three, okay?
Correct.
All right, and so uh, how, how did you arrive at, at the, at those numbers? Those seem, and I'll, I'll start, save my comments for later, I'll, I'll just ask, how did you arrive at those numbers?
Um, I believe it was a aspect of the code. But we haven't, like I said, we haven't gotten in the deep dive of electrifying, you know, more than, more than uh we're currently showing are the bikes themselves either. I'm sorry, I don't know exactly, Mark, but I.
Yeah, that's all right, I, I'm, and you'll, you'll, you'll get my thoughts a, a little bit. Uh, and then the um, the storage situation uh is I, some in, on, on the, on the ground floor plan, it said something near the parking as residence storage. But you're, you're also planning on some residents or all residents using a uh their unit as, as bike storage, is that, is that right? Do I have that right?
I think there would probably be two different aspects. And these, these would be weatherproof storage lockers. You can see those in a lot of multifamily, different projects around Boulder. They're, you know, metal boxes, if you will, where residents can keep things other than their bikes.
Okay. Um, and, but uh, if a unit, if, if a resident brought a, a bike to their, to their uh, to their efficiency unit, would you a- allow those on decks or would that not be allowed on decks?
I, I don't know if we've gotten into the operation aspect. Like I said, we're planning on incorporating it within the unit right now.
Okay, all right. Um, okay, I think uh, I think that's, that's all my questions for now, thank you.
They, they're all fantastic questions, I think, as somebody mentioned, we're, we're in month ten of a three-year process. So I think it's, it's, it's uh worth reiterating what Marcus said, is that we're, we're trying to show enough to create a dialogue, but we definitely are not purporting that we figured everything out. We definitely want to have a dialogue with the city about what the drivers of all these solutions need to be. But I think it's really, really great to think about those ideas right now, this is the perfect time, actually.
M L.
Um, thank you, John. Uh, if there aren't any other questions about parking, I was going to go on to key issue number three, which is the building itself.
Um, okay, well, I have a question about parking.
Okay, I'll refrain.
Okay, I, I'd just like to uh inquire uh to what degree you've considered making not having a car a condition of, at least with your tenants uh for some of them, yeah, if, if that's an option that you've considered with respect to your parking concerns. uh, for some of them, if, if that's an option that you've considered with respect to your parking concerns?
Um, we, we've certainly had discussions around that. I think pricing of parking is, is one way to maybe disincentivize those that, uh, you know, don't want to own a car, don't have to pay for parking. Uh, so we kind of start there. Uh, but you know, we're not there yet in terms of the operational plan with our property manager and how we would uh, potentially, you know, not allow residents that own cars.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, ML.
Great. Thanks, John. Um, so I will ask some questions about now the building itself. And, uh, I will start with um, the shared communal spaces. So I see one identified. It's on the second floor. Is that, is that the only communal um, building? Is on that building that is on the, that space? The resident common room?
Yes, ma'am. That, that's the only conditioned space.
Okay, so when the information refers to, um, a kitchen or a place to have a meal with a bigger group and all that, that's the room that they would, and the entire anybody in the building would have access to that, not just that second floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and so looking at the intent for the building to be, um, sustainable, I'm wondering, I see the language potential PV solar awning above. So that to me does not seem like a very big array. And so I wonder regards to that, what percentage of the PV arrays in that? Uh, is that the only place you're assuming a PV array? And what percentage of the site use would be covered in that amount of square footage?
Um, that's one of two spots we're thinking. I don't have an exact number in terms of coverage or output for that array. Right now, we're thinking that the sloped roofs, slopes towards the south would be really, really great places, even if we can leverage the, the exact solar angle to have solar arrays on the roof. And then the solar, uh, awning, the, the verbiage that you just used is really kind of multi, multi, uh, functional. It generates electricity, but it also provides shading for the people that are outside. And given that this is south facing, um, we think that that's a great sort of, you know, shade and weather protection device for the outside. So uh, we're just kind of getting in. First, we need to kind of determine what the reform is going to be, and then we want to maximize it.
Do you have a target for onsite PV? I mean, just given your mission, given the language that you use to describe who you are and what you do and why you do it. I'm just curious, do you have a, an intended goal for what percent of your electric use would be, uh, delivered onsite?
Yeah, I, I apologize. We, we don't have an exact number. Um, you know, it's, I think as, as somebody mentioned earlier, we're, we're definitely interested in exploring the pitched roofs. Uh, and obviously, you know, keeping in mind the efficiency of the PV as well. Uh, so they're, you know, try, trying to balance those, those two things. It's, it's pretty difficult to commit to any sort of percentage.
So when you state as your goal, that sort of, you don't have a concept in mind that we want to aim for this? It doesn't tie to what you might actually be designing for? Is that what I'm understanding? You say the goal of, of the sustainability component of onsite renewables? You don't have an idea? Is it ten percent, twenty percent? Eighty percent? No. Okay, I can live with that.
Our, our goal is consistent in terms of being zero carbon and PV is one way to get there. Uh, but there's many other ways as well and, um.
I appreciate that you're going all electric. I think that that is, um, a great, a great step. But then, of course, parallel to that is, don't tie into the grid for electricity.
Right. And I, I just want to mention too, that there's definitely metrics there, but it all really starts with the, the building consumption. When we, when we worked on Alpine Bank, you know, that's a major over on, on Folsom and Canyon. That's a lead build building. That's a major sustainability issue for them. But to really get to what the efficiency of the system was, we need to figure out the offset. And that's driven by the building consumption. So as Ross mentioned, smaller units lea- is less material, is less energy consumption. Um, we just haven't gotten to that part of the engineering yet. I think we're definitely forward-thinking in terms of trying to set the architecture up to receive as much as we can. We just don't have specifics yet.
Do you think you might have more information at site review?
I.
Is that something that would come on board sooner rather than later?
We're definitely going to be getting into the engineering, so I, I would assume it's going to be getting factored in at some point. I can't say exactly when.
Uh huh.
But the array that we designed at Alpine Bank was definitely part of our use review for that.
Cool. Um, so my last question about the building, um, I'm looking at the, uh, sort of building coverage of the land, and I'm curious about two things. One would be the, um, urban heat island that I don't see a lot of pervious ground on this. Do you know what the percent is of perviousness on the, on the property? Everything looks, um, hard surface, except for the little gardens in front of those five units at grade?
Uh, do you mean at the upper levels or the ground?
Well, if we look at the, at the footprint of the building, what percent of that site has pervious ground?
I don't have that exact number. I can't say for an infill site like this, the amount of green that is around the footprint is very, very large, based on my experience. You know, having such a substantial dog run on the east and the basically front yards for those units is kind of a rarity. Um, at the upper level, we definitely are can, are, are thinking of, um, garden boxes, uh, very much like the project that, um, I worked on up across the university bookstore. Those have elevated stormwater management devices and community gardens at the upper level to help mitigate the, the heat island effects.
Okay. Those are all my questions regards to the building. I appreciate your answers. Thank you so much.
Those are good questions.
Okay, thank you, ML. Um, any other questions of the applicant from the board? Okay, then we'll move ahead to our, uh, uh, public, uh, comment section. Um, let's, uh, get a, let's see how many people are likely to say anything tonight. I see three hands up. Oh, well, there's a lot more up now. Okay, well, let's see, we're now at, okay, I think, given the number here, uh, I think, uh, we need to limit, uh, comments to two minutes each tonight. So, uh, so let's see, Vivian, would you care to move ahead and manage the public comment section here?
Sure. Thanks, John. Um, so we'll go ahead. Devin has the timer ready, and we'll start with, uh, Fred Jones, followed by Enigma. And Enigma, please, uh, please introduce yourself by your full name when we call on you. But first, Fred, please go ahead, Fred. And you may have to unmute yourself from your, from your end, Fred.
I, I think I'm losing time here. Can you hear me?
There's a bit of some feedback, but please go ahead.
My name is Fred Jones.
John, you may need to mute.
I lived across Twenty Second Street, the proposed though, you know. Just close it down. Two minutes is not very much time to defend fifty years of your life. Um, I heard a three-minute train, uh, statement, and you should understand that those of us who oppose this have put a lot of time and effort into this. You give almost infinite time to people who support the project, but you give very little to us. Having two minutes to support work that you've done for fifty years is, well, maybe the very definition of abusive bureaucracy. Uh, what can I tell you? I don't have any time. Uh, I can tell you that we have always worked here for I don't know. I mean, I don't even really know where to begin at this point, but I'll try to read some of this. First, let me say we'd like to have more good housing, uh, quality housing for working people in Boulder. This is not quality housing. We've lived here for about fifty years and have been part of the effort over those years. Make Boulder a place where working people could actually want to live. And we've always supported open space, parks, rec centers, libraries. And when city budgets for parks and medians were cut, we became volunteer caretakers for the pocket park and until two years ago, a median on Walmart. Our home is one unit in a triplex West Park Park. We began as renters and were eventually able to purchase the triplex before it came impossible for people like us. Over the years, we have tried to buy very high-quality, low-cost housing. So for example, while our lot is about one-third the size of the proposed development, we provide substantially more landscaping and green areas. And while our units are larger, they rent for about two hundred dollars per month, less than the seventeen hundred dollar rent in the proposed project. We have always regarded our tenants as a source of rents, but have never regarded our, our tenants as a source of rent, but always as neighbors. Most have stayed for years and many have become close friends. We understand that some believe moderately sized units like ours should be replaced with a kind of very large-scale, high-density, high-profit and impersonal structure that is being proposed. But if approved, this development would devastating us and others like us in the neighborhood. And it will also create the same problems for most current and future renters. There will be many problems with this massive development, but the most immediate will be access to on-street parking, like it or not.
Fred, I'm, I'm really sorry to interrupt you, but we want to bear the other members of the public.
And that requires a place to park it. Setting wishful thinking aside, over fifty years, that has included all of our tenants and for working couples usually.
Fred, sorry, I need to interrupt.
Conflicts of parking before the pandemic and as people have returned to work as there are already no more than three or four parking places on Twenty Second on most days. With at least twenty-eight more cars in this project, competition for parking will force the overflow into surrounding neighborhoods. People will
Apologies, Fred. We have to be fair to the rest of the participants. So John did mention that each member of the public will have two minutes to share their comments on this item tonight. Um, next up, we have, let's see, Enigma raised, uh, lowered their hand. So now we have Jill Adlergronau. Um, and would appreciate if you can watch the timer. Um, please go ahead, Jill.
Jill, we can't hear you.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, planning board. My name is Jill Adlergronau, and I'm a graduate student at the University of Colorado and a member of the university's Boulder Affordable Housing Research Initiative. My research examines the types and tenures of multifamily housing being built in Boulder's medium-density, high-density and mixed-use zones. While these zones represent a fraction of our residentially zoned land, they contain almost all of our affordable housing. I've reviewed the data and examined case studies on the multifamily developments that have been proposed and built in the aforementioned zones over the last five years. And it's clear that our intensity standards are too low to produce any form of new market rate affordability. This does not mean that market rate affordability is no longer possible. Boulder residents continually reject the kind of density that would lead to market rate affordability, but other communities are not as exclusionary as we are. In an extensive study of a hundred and one cities and towns in the greater Boston area titled How to Increase Housing Affordability: Understanding Local Deterrence to Building Multifamily Housing, political economists found that relaxing density restrictions, specifically by increasing the maximum number of units allowed per acre, was the most effective method, effective method to increase housing affordability. Their empirical study clearly demonstrates a correlation between increasing dwelling units per acre and rent reduction. The National Association of Realtors recently named Boulder among the top ten highest-priced metro areas in the country. For too long, we have embraced regressive zoning policy that prioritizes wealthy residents over lo- low-income residents. This project fits in our city. What doesn't fit are the luxury townhomes that have been constructed by right all over the place. Ones across from the Chamber, the ones on Spruce and Folsom, the ones that line East Pearl. These developers could build expensive housing by right, but they're going through the trouble to try something new. I urge you to accept their vision. I urge you to try for market rate affordability. Rejecting this proposal sends the clear message that we've given up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you for sharing, um, your views tonight. Next, we have, uh, CJ Oldham, followed by Yan Jan Hickory. CJ, please go ahead.
Hi, I've lived in Boulder since fifty-nine, been in the Whittier neighborhood since, uh, for the last thirty-three years. Um, I understand and I get this project, but more parking, the less units, less money they make. Quite honestly, a lot of these developers, they'll build a project like this, particularly since they're apartments, get the gross rent multipliers up and turn around and sell it to a REIT. Uh, I would be, I'd be a monkey's uncle if it didn't happen within five years. The fallacy that these smaller units provide for people not have cars is proven, you know, time and time again in Boulder, Whittier Square, Whittier Place, all through Boulder. Uh, maybe there's a maximum of occupancy of two units or two people per unit, but doesn't mean they won't have two cars. It's a misnomer as well to show all their mapping with the Twenty Fourth Street parking, which even today I was out there was, most of it, seventy percent was filled up already. And those people aren't going to give up their parking just because you don't provide parking on this site for the cars that are needed. They're going to have to sacrifice units to provide parking, you know, as used by right would require. Whittier Square is, um, four times landmass, the parking there ratio, one point three per, uh, cars per unit. Whittier Place, when it comes back online, that was one car per unit. All these projects park the cars underneath. One car per unit at Whittier Place. When they rebuild that out, this neighborhood is going to be a disaster with people overflowing. I was there today. A gal walked out of Whittier Square, walked across the street, picked up her car on Twenty Fourth Street, right adjacent to where you want to build this project. You know, today, any number of times, you can get out there and see that when people get at home from work, these projects are going to fill up. So you've got to provide for the parking. Um, I think for the last thirty years down here in Denver, I see kids parking and you can have all the codes, this, that and the other. I see kids parking in, in the yards, in the right-ofways. So, you know, if you're going to enforce it, perhaps you have a, a restriction on the rental lease, one car per unit maximum or even less, and that's the only way you're going to handle it. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for your contribution. Next up, we have Jan Hickory. Please go ahead for your two minutes. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I am the resident who said that there was an issue with the city sewage system capacity to handle the sewage in this area due to the overdevelop-
I've, uh.
We seem to have lost her audio.
Okay, maybe we should.
Dan?
Okay.
We can start the timer again, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I am the resident who said that there was an issue with the city sewage system um, capacity to handle the sewage in this area due to the overdevelopment in this area. The reason I said that there was an issue is because our duplex, which is located within a stone's throw from this proposed development, had three major sewage backups from the city's main sewage line, all within one year. This cost us tens of thousands of dollars to clean up and having to remodel the basements multiple times within one year. Each of these backups was confirmed by the city utility workers and the plumbers and workers who had came to work on our property. And the city were, utility workers who had to clear the city's block sewage main, the city's main sewage line. So there is an issue. I heard you guys say there wasn't. But when you have to spend at least thirty thousand dollars in one year to clean up the city's sewage that was dumped into our sewage line, there is an issue, and I hope you guys understand that. I talked to the city's, um, utility worker about this, uh, multiple times. utility worker about this multiple times and he did tell me that because of the overdevelopment in this area, it is getting very difficult for the city sewage line to handle the capacity from all the overdevelopment. Adding 45 units is only going to make this problem worse. And I do not want the city sewage in the basement of our duplex anymore. I also am concerned about the parking and I know this has been brought up, but I think it's a joke that the developer said that the people who work at the commercial building will not drive to work, so they don't need to provide parking for the employees. How are you going to prove that? Are you going to tell your employees that there's no parking available for them so they cannot drive to work? The developer is only speculating that the employees and the residents will not own a car and you don't have any data to prove this. The developer is not being realistic and is only speculating. He said quote unquote that they, they are not there yet to not allow residents to own cars. So they can't guarantee or even claim that there will not be a parking issue nor that this will be a negative impact on the neighbors. It will, because they're going to be parking in our privately owned parking spots. One of the staffers said that they went out and counted 15 parking, 50 parking spots today. I don't know where they found them, but maybe they're parking all the, you're counting all the parking spots that were privately owned and.
Jan, Jan, I'm just going to have to um ask you to wrap up. The two minutes have passed.
Okay, well, I wrapped up, but those parking spots, some of those around there are owned by private residents and you can't count on the residents allowing their residents to park in our private parking spots.
Thank you. Thank you for participating tonight. Next up, we have Claudia Theem, followed by Lynn Segal. Claudia, please go ahead for your two minutes. Thank you.
Hi there. Good evening, members of planning board. My name is Claudia Hanson Theem. I'm part of the Boulder Housing Network. I think it's great to see this project at concept review and I really like its potential to bring additional accessible housing and pedestrian life to this location on East Pearl Street. We know that there is growing demand for small and car-free living spaces, especially amongst folks seeking to reduce their environmental impacts and cost of living. And it makes sense to add these homes in walkable, bikeable and transit connected neighborhoods like Whittier. The immediate neighbors have expressed concern about parking impacts as they often do, but reducing private vehicle use is a citywide goal. And we'll make no real progress towards it if we continue to mandate enough space for every driving aged human to park a car. And in the case of micro apartments, overparking feels particularly absurd. The footprint of a parking space is more than half of the footprint of each new home proposed here. So I hope you'll support the requested parking reduction and ask city staff and the developer to use other tools to manage the impacts in the surrounding area. Um, but I think it's really a shame we're spending so much time talking about parking because there's a lot of other things in this design that we should welcome here in Boulder. The first thing I noticed about it was its use of outdoor corridors to access individual homes. Unlike the double loaded corridors that we often use to maximize buildable space, this allows for natural light and cross ventilation in every unit. There's also this shared courtyard deck, um, which in a less car centric city, we'd find more on the ground level, but it gives this private extension of the home. It's a place to linger and not just pass through. It's got access to light and air and it also shelters folks from noise on the street. And again, it's just good design that almost all of the 45 units open onto this space in addition to having their own private balconies. Features like this can make living small feel delightful. And if we can provide that experience while also providing homes that advance our housing and climate goals, we're doing it right. This proposal is a great start. Let's please lean into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Next, we have Lynn Segal, followed by Judith Jones. And I'd just like to ask um others if they're planning to speak to go ahead and raise their hands now so we have an idea of how many um more people there are. Uh, Lynn, please go ahead.
Less is more. There are no for sale units here. There's no, they're going to do in lieu. This is, you know, what you're doing is you're opening up middle, more demand for more middle. Demand for more middle with this project. Because the developer himself said they're going to get higher wages. And guess what? We haven't got any jobs housing balance solved here. The more jobs we have here, the more wages, the more demand for the middle for projects just like this. And you know what the 300 foot thing is? They should have a quarter of a par, car per unit. They should have one car for four units. Because that's equivalent to a larger unit like in Papilio's. This is um, you know, fundamental things here are not being met with the BVCP either. Um, why don't they have a ground loop heat pump? Have you looked at your Excel bill for the, for the gas lately? And these guys haven't even mentioned a ground loop heat pump. What the heck? This is a new project. You know, I'm getting one in my place. And where are they going to put all their stuff? They're going to be driving across town for storage. You know, I'm sorry, yes, I'm 69 and yes, I'm hoarding and I have all kinds of space, but the, everybody does. Other people have demand for stuff too. Um, it is uh 1,700 to 2,600. It says there right in the place in their document they sent in. Um, there is a density request for 20 to 22 units. Um, that's on page 27. That is there. So why wasn't answered by Laura Kaplan who asked about that? Um, what they need to do is true communal housing. Dorms with sliding doors that are, that are um soundproof for privacy for this age component demography. And it's one demographic. That's really weird to stick one demographic in. So um, let's see, I've got 12 things and definitely more time. Um.
Lynn, sorry, sorry to interrupt.
All of this, all of these things.
The two minutes.
Who pays? Who pays? We pay. And we're not going to stand for it anymore.
Thank you, Lynn.
The developer is rubbing.
Sorry for cutting people off, but I just want to make sure that we're being fair and uh providing two minutes to each member as the chair mentioned at the beginning. So thank you to those who have been sticking to the two minutes. Um, can you see the timer when it comes up? Does the timer show on the screen? Yeah, okay. Just want to make sure. Um, next up we have Judith Jones. Please go ahead, Judith. You have two minutes.
My name is Judith Jones. My husband and I are property owners of the triplex located on 22nd Street. This is our home. We've lived here for over 45 years. When we first moved to South Whittier, it was an old semi-rural area with small houses, dirt roads, limited sidewalks. It's later de- designated as high density neighborhood. And as a result, we have uh, we welcome the street improvement and the addition of the mini park, which we take care of. Uh, the boss, this proposal has a false assumption that tenants will not need cars. I'm a retired teacher kind of person they're trying to attract. And my job was in Orvada. Although I car pooled, I still needed a car to get to work. Uh, with this proposal, uh, there, there will be an overflow uh onto the neighborhood with the result of residents having to drive around searching for a parking spot, often several blocks away from where they live. And this will impact further congestion and safety issues since both Pearl Street and Walnut have heavy traffic during certain times of the day. The residents are going to be forced to compete for spaces. I would like to see uh this development have fewer sites. Each unit have a parking spot. I would like to see a more diverse unit in order to have a diverse population, which our neighborhood could use. Uh, so what I urge and I would actually like to see is some landscaping. That little strip of dog park, we have the mini park is located in front of our property and the entire neighborhood uses that as the dog park. And I can assure you that little strip will never get used as a dog park because they'll come to our mini park. Uh, so I hope that you listen to us and change the, respond accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Judith, and thank you for sticking to the two minutes. Really appreciate that as well. Um, next up we have Rosie Vivian. Please go ahead, Rosie. You have two minutes.
Hi there, everybody. Um, I sent you guys an email earlier and glad I made it just to catch the tail end of this meeting. And I just wanted to say that I support this project. I think efficiencies are so important for Boulder in a place, such a wealthy community at a downtown location with public transportation, biking, walking. To have places that are um appealing for young people to be able to live here car free is amazing and I don't see why we're afraid to embrace this project. If we think about the big picture, about the future and what's best for Boulder when we're making decisions like this, I just think I have to choose people over parking. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Any other members of the public who wish to speak at this time, please raise your hand. Nobody else on their, oh, let's see.
Um. I see.
Yeah, Macon, Macon. Please go ahead, Macon.
So if we're going to achieve a sustainable planet, we have to build places where people who want to live with a small carbon footprint can live and thrive. We need dense, small units positioned along central arteries, the central corridors, the bus routes in our town. For most of us, it is hard to imagine a life other than the suburban subdivisions that we grew up in, myself included. But the young people, the people of color, they're showing us a different way of living. Smaller, tighter, more social, fewer carbon emissions. We can't create a future for our planet and our town that is worth living in if we cannot transcend a lifestyle that's locked into suburban forms with lots of stuff, using lots of energy, with lots of free parking on the streets. We're called upon to do this by the melting glaciers and the crazy weather, the overheated planet to celebrate transit oriented development like this project. To enable people to live lightly in individual units and to provide a place for people who want to live a sustainable life. Small, efficient, use of bikes and walking and transit. Not a lot of stuff and on a transit corridor. Are we really going to ask for more 200 square foot parking spaces for 300 square foot unit? That would be absurd. But it would set off the values. Do we value homes for cars more than homes for people? If most of your discussion tonight, folks, and I say this as a former planning board member, is about parking, it'll be a lost opportunity. Don't go forth as though you're the parking board. Be the planning board and, and help this design come to fruition in a better way. Thank you.
Thank you, Macon, for um your contribution. So Chair, we only have hands raised for people who have spoken already. So I see to you whether we allow people to speak twice.
No, I think uh, we don't, we are not going to start doing that. So thank you. I'll bring the uh public comment section to a close. And uh, I think it's time for a break. Okay. So I think now is the time when we can ask questions and have a coherent discussion. I think the way to do this is initially to organize our comments. Along the lines that staff has asked us to do. There were three major questions. The first was whether whether this proposal uh is compatible with the uh. Boulder Valley Comp Plan. And so I'd ask everyone to think about that. In their initial comments and then we'll move to the other questions and and after that then. And have general comments on whatever, whatever you think. So who'd like to start out with the with the first? It maybe if if staff could put up those three questions. People will be able to organize their thoughts accordingly.
I'm sorry, John, just so I understand the plan, do you want us all to go around and comment on number one? And then all go around and comment on number two. Okay.
Sorry, I wasn't very clear about that. Okay. Here we go. All right. So is the concept plan consistent with Boulder Valley Comp Plan? ML.
Um, thank you, John. I. You know, the the concern that I have about um. Meeting the BVCP. Kind of points to some of the questions George was trying to get answered and if this. If this, if we're seeing this project um under the umbrella of middle income affordability. And that's what this project claims to be targeting. There's nothing to guarantee it will in fact serve this market. So I. I am kind of um conflicted about. The Boulder Valley Cop Plan's um. Goal. Of providing. Housing and I understand this diversity piece that this brings to the table with the small units. But I am concerned with the goal. If this is in fact the goal of the developer. There is not a lot of evidence that it will meet the goal.
John, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't know if you were through or not. Sarah, go ahead.
I'll just echo ML's uh concerns uh. I appreciate that this is a small lot on which there which the developers are trying to maximize. Uh, the build out and I, you know, A, we have no input on that part per se, but. You know, the price point that they're pointing to is exactly what we know to be. The price point for ELUs in the city based on what we learned from our. Presentation on housing affordability two weeks ago. Um, so you know, I think if we took that topic off the table and just looked at it as what it is, which is a dense. Apartment development and it's a, it's a um less fraught conversation um. And just accept that it is gonna be, I mean, it sure looks like it's gonna be. Market rate, not market rate affordable. Um, two thousand dollars is not affordable. Um, it's market rate. So um, but you know, we need more housing. Um, I I'm not sure micro units are. The thing, but uh, you know, they're certainly a hot topic these days in development circles, so. But I I I just think we should not think of this as affordable, market rate affordable. It's just market rate.
So if the question is, you know, is the proposed concept plan preliminarily consistent with the goals, objectives and recommendations of the BVCP, the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan? My answer to that is yes, it's consistent with the underlying land use, it's consistent with the zoning and I understand that. The zoning has changed to be higher density than it was in the past, but it is consistent with the current zoning. As some of our commenters have pointed out, this is exactly where you would want to have higher density living. Uh, it's point four miles to a grocery store in either direction, pretty easily attainable um along Pearl Street by bus. By scooter, by bicycle, walking with a little hand cart. Um, grocery shopping is one of those big things that people use their car for. So like being near our major grocery stores is a big plus. Um, it's right by transit, it's right by downtown, it's really walkable to the twenty ninth street mall. Like if you were going to, you know. Try to find a place on the map where we would really like to have um places where you can experiment with. Having smaller units that people don't own cars, this is a great place to do it. Um, so I do think it is consistent with compact development pattern, policy two point oh three. Uh, policy two point two four, commitment to a walkable and accessible city and other uh policies that we have that encourage housing diversity. Um, and uh, you know, our desire to grow. Different kinds of housing that can serve different kinds of populations. I think the fact that these units will be furnished. Will serve a certain segment of the population that doesn't own a lot of stuff or doesn't want to own a lot of stuff. Um, and I think that it's a very interesting uh concept and I think this is a good place for it that is consistent with our our goals for housing in the city.
I concur with Laura. I appreciate her um recitation of the BVCP policies. Um, and I'll simply add on by saying um that. One of the goals that we have as a community is a variety of housing types and and that. Variety of housing types doesn't always need to be met within a project. You can have a project like this. That is uh designed around specific to. A particular demographic, a particular lifestyle and still achieve our variety of housing goals. Um, at other locations within the city. I'll also say that my, the very first. Uh apartment I lived in in Boulder was an efficiency at twenty eighth and. Uh, college, um, Blue Spruce Apartments and uh efficiency living is a, can be a wonderful thing. Uh, in spite of its size and I arrived without much and anyway, I think efficiency living. And this project uh meet those BBCP goals. Thanks.
Yeah, um, I think it is preliminarily consistent with the goals, objectives and recommendations of the BVCP. However, I don't think that means that the concerns that people raised aren't valid. Um, I see a lot of them as like. Externalities and the devil being in the details. Um, I really appreciate the presentation, everything we heard and I will, and we'll get more into that in a moment, so. Um, that's not meant as any kind of criticism toward the applicants or the work that they've done. This is, you know, preliminary site review and it's, we're not going to have the details yet. Um, uh, but you know, when I look at the current zoning, when I look at what we're trying to do with diversity of housing types and all of that, there's just just nothing that rises to level of like. This can't probably happen or you know, I feel like this is totally inconsistent. I I don't see that. Um, however, I will be, you know, very curious to see what comes back um as we get more into site review. Um, you know, and and see how some of the concerns that we heard from the community are addressed and some of the stuff that uh plenty board members are raising because I think that's what's kind of. You know, lead to where where we actually land on this. Um, I suspect so. Yeah, I I see it as overall consistent and then. As always, it comes down to details. So we'll see what those are when we get a little further along.
Thank you, George.
Yeah, um. I'm with Lisa again. I mean, I I I don't see any major inconsistencies, you know, in general. Um, I agree with what almost everybody has said. I I am concerned that the one area that. What we're trying to accomplish here, you hear the 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 people that are supporting this in the community. And even the developer saying themselves that this is going to potentially fulfill a niche in the eighty to one hundred and twenty AMI. And it's going to create, you know, that it's going to drive sort of a car free area. I I would, I would love. For the developer to put their money where their mouth is and um. You know, put some, put some, if 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 their mission is really to do an eighty to to one twenty AMI. To go ahead and and lock that in for the development in one form or another. If their mission is um. Really to have a car free environment, let's go ahead and lock that in and and have and and have people. Sign, you know, fifty percent of the apartments are more assigned that they'll be car free. Um, because there's a big sales pitch here. And I'm concerned that the sales pitch is very different than the reality. Um, I I went to um, that, thank you to the developer for for pointing us to where you're living. I I went there. And I looked at some of the units on there and and what's interesting about our units or or your living site is they actually show. What's for rent and what city, where their furniture installations are and it's all over the map, right? Lower scale cities are, you know, a thousand fifteen hundred bucks. But then there's, you know, Austin, Texas, which has units starting at twenty five hundred. There's LA where units are starting at three thousand, ELUs. There's um ELUs in New York City where where things are starting at above five thousand. And so I I'm just concerned that the that the community might get hoodwinked into something. And and I'm not suggesting that the developer is nefarious in any way. They've already, they've already said that. This is a market rate thing, but then they've also positioned this as eighty to one hundred and twenty percent AMI and a car free thing. So I I just like there to be. A a little bit more teeth around that um so that um Boulder gets what's being pitched to us. Um, but outside of that and that that's kind of the devil in the details. That I see is, you know, as as Lisa kind of positioned it, at least from my perspective is, I don't see necessarily anything. Um, generally inconsistent with BVCP, but the devil's in the details of how it's implemented and. And and how this really serves Boulder um and and our community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I'll, I'll just say that I think uh. I'm in complete agreement with what George and Lisa and uh my colleagues have said. That this is compatible with the comp plan. That doesn't mean that it is compatible with everything Boulder wants in a project. And I think we'll have an opportunity to discuss the details uh later on. But for example, as as George said, there's a lot of aspirational talk here that we need to make sure that. Uh, it is not just aspirational, but that it becomes real. ML.
Um, John, thank you. I'm just, I'm just gonna riff on that. Um, I absolutely concur with what. With the way George uh positioned all of this that. I have no problem with this preliminary preliminary consistency with the Boulder Valley Comp Plan. I think it's um, my concern is with the way this is being pitched in the community and. How is that going to actually in fact in reality land and what do we actually um. Expecting as a result of of that. So there seems to be some discrepancies, but again. It, I don't think that there's any issue. I don't have any issue with meeting um key issue number one.
Okay, thank you. All right. The next issue, does planning board have feedback on proposed parking for the project and? Obviously, this is something that a lot of people have shown concern about, so let's, let's. Deal with this right now. Mark.
Uh, as I mentioned before the meeting started, I'm currently in Overland Park, Kansas. And in Overland Park, Kansas, there are acres upon acres upon acres of parking. You never want for a parking space anywhere you go, but you go everywhere by car. But so parking is everywhere, but the thing that's missing is a sense of place. This is a, this is a pin to the automobile and automobile storage and it's a pin to. Uh, suburban, poor urban design, no urban design, suburban, uh endless suburban. Uh, roads, parking. And you know, as I, when I went from the transportation board to the planning board. I I've always thought and advocated there's a link between uh transportation and housing. That's obviously. One uh sub- topic that we deal with all the time, but I I didn't really think that the dominant issue. In almost every, uh, almost every site and use review would be um. Cars and parking and how we store our cars and I find that sad. Um, so. But parking is an issue and what um my uh greatest concern with this project as shown. In in this concept review and and I do find this particular concept uh review to be. Um, at the uh lacking in detail, put it on a spectrum of, you know. Where we are and what what we see in terms of concept reviews. Uh, I find this one to be. I struggle with it more because of the lack of details. Um, but in general, I will say that they're asking for a large parking reduction. That's fine. I I support that. But I find the TDM, even the preliminary TDM plan. Uh, and their concepts around ways of attracting people without cars. The ways of giving carrots to people without cars, the ways of answering some of the neighbors' concerns to be weak. And uh I would uh encourage them to have a much more robust. TDM uh plan uh for this development when they come back at site review. And I I know I will be um focused on that, again sadly, to the detriment of focusing on on other design elements. Um, but they've got to come back with more car share, more bike electrification, more car electrification. Um, but we also, I want to acknowledge one other thing and that is. We want them to practice paid parking. We want them to practice market rate. Incentives to not arrive with a car and as a city. Boulder, uh, we we have, we have free city right of way parking. Outside, just outside of this unit, just outside of this lot. And so uh what we will end up with until the city practices. Much of what we preach to developers, we will end up with a situation which I find problematic. That is, university charges for parking appropriately and the neighbors. Uh, the neighbors, because the city doesn't charge for parking appropriately, then neighborhoods feel like they suffer from. Uh, from students parking in their neighborhood. So if you have, your competition is free. And you're charging for something, uh, you're at it, you're at a real disadvantage there. So I would encourage the city. To uh uh practice some of our own uh parking policies and goals. Thanks.
Lisa.
Um, yeah, I'll I'll be fairly brief. Um. This is kind of the situation we always get into with parking is that we both want density and we want to. Preference spaces for human beings over spaces for cars and also there's the reality that. Our built environment currently requires cars, that people own cars and they have to put them somewhere. Um. You know, so so again, I I think one, um, and and I'm sure this would push the pricing into uh an unfeasible place. But I I wish that I was looking at tuck under. I wish that I was looking at a structure. Um, you know, some other things like that are undergrounded parking um instead of surface. Um, I believe it was surface if I remember the rendering correctly and then um. Around TDM specifically, I I think it would be really interesting to see some creative solutions to that. Uh, again. around TDM specifically, I, I think it would be really interesting to see some creative solutions to that. Uh, again, not all, everything I think is possible to manage administratively, but um if it's going to be, you know, leased out or managed directly, then there are cool things you can do with gamification and, and you know, with that splitting apart of the parking spot um from the unit to, to really um incentivize and disincentivize certain kinds of behaviors, not just owning a car, but also ways that you get to and from where you are. And, and that can be kind of fun for people. Um, you have to be careful that you're not hurting anybody, but I've seen that be very successful. Um, and then finally, I agree on electrification. Um, you know, certainly if I'm, if I'm seeing parking going in, um then I, I, I like it a lot more if it's, you know, plug and play. Um, and I know that some of that's required by uh code already, um, you know, but, but just anything that can be done to kind of move it along and to make it a I know you're gonna make it a full electric building, which I love, um, you know, but to profit certain kinds of use or even electric scooters and so on. I think it'd be interesting to see some finer grain things around that. Um. And then lastly, I can't remember if this came up or not, but um I, I don't remember if this is adjacent or in, and I apologize, I should have looked, looked this up, but um a neighborhood parking permit area, but I think looking at, at that, you know, what we can do to kind of manage um street parking and the impacts that'll happen if the parking's not onsite, uh, I think is really important for neighbors and adjacent uses and so on. And just um, I, I would also be curious to hear details of that when this comes back in front of us again. So those are some things that I have been thinking about. And I love that you're um talking about doing good bike parking and putting it in the unit so that people can put their very fancy bikes um in safe places, because I think that's good.
Thank you. Sarah.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm gonna agree with pretty much everything Lisa said. But I had a different thought about the bike parking, which was um, okay, three hundred square feet, super small. And a bicycle could take up a lot of space in three hundred square feet. And I would think I'd prefer to see um locked storage for the bikes uh where you current somewhere on the, on the lot, on the parcel right now, you know, just it might be where you currently have um parking uh for the bikes. That's between the parking for the cars and the back of the first of the ground floor units that face twenty second street. Uh, just so that there's as much livable space in those ELUs as possible. Um, that's one thought. And then, you know, I'll, I, I don't agree with Mark on everything he said, but I do think that part of the problem we part of the reason we keep coming back to parking as a problem is not actually because, solely because uh, there's this conflict between people who think we shouldn't have cars and people who think everybody should have cars. It's because I think we lack some city policies that um uh, allow us to have uh more thoughtful uh conversations about parking. One of these I've already brought up, which is the Eco Pass issue, which in new developments is covers Eco Pass for three years, and then that's it. If we want people to use public transportation, rental development should have Eco Pass for any resident at any time over the course of the life of that building. I mean, it's just crazy that we have this regulation that ends it at three years. That's just silly. Um, so that would be a policy I think we should look at. Um, if I understood Mark's uh point about uh this, the university requires uh students to pay for parking on the street. I think we should be doing the same thing. Um, I know we kind of do with a neighborhood parking pass, but in a development like this where the, the um applicant is essentially offloading parking costs into, onto the city and will be allow, asking, encouraging the residents to use publicly owned streets uh to store their cars. And many people in Boulder have cars because they go to the mountains, et cetera, et cetera. Then we should be trying to develop a policy or set of policies that um raise fees for the utilization of that kind of public utility, which is what a street is. Um, I, I think I am gonna, assuming this comes back while I'm still on planning board, I am gonna have a problem with the level of parking reduction that's being asked. Um, and I realize that TDM will have to, we'll have to see what it is. Uh, but um I do think this project brings up a bunch of big policy questions that we should be looking at. Thank you.
So I'm gonna agree with Sarah about the Eco Passes and also that there are some policy questions here that are bigger than this project. Um, I am gonna try to focus on what can we say right now that's useful for the applicant for this project coming back for site review. Um, I think that no matter how many parking spaces the applicant provides, if they are, have to be paid for, which they should be, that is good policy. But the fact remains that this building is surrounded by free public parking. And, and maybe I did not notice some signs that said private parking, but in walking around twenty second street, Walnut, um Pearl Street, twenty first street, twenty third street, there are unmetered, non hourly restricted, just free parking spaces all around this building. And some residents are going to choose to park their cars there because it makes economic sense for them. That's just the way of the world, and there's nothing this applicant can do to prevent it. If they provide more parking spaces that are paid for, some people are still gonna choose the free city parking, which gets to the policy issue that Sarah, I think, uh, was talking about, or at least that's where I take it. Um, so all of that to say, or sort of as a preamble to say, I do think that the applicant is asking for a pretty severe parking reduction. I do think that their TDM plan is going to need to be extremely robust and convincing of how they are going to prevent just, you know, twenty five or thirty people from parking cars in the street and competing with the neighbors. And while it is true that these residents have just as much right to a free public parking space as any other neighbor, we don't want to be, by permitting a building with a very severe parking reduction, creating a hassle. I mean, that's just not, that's not good planning, right? So I do think that the applicant needs to show how they're gonna reduce demand for those free public parking spaces around the building. Um, and I think, and, and I'm trying to think of, I'm racking my brains of how you would do that. So one thing that I would be looking at is that car share program. Because I do think people want cars to go to the mountains. I do think people want cars for uh, you know, trips with family. There are things that people are gonna want cars for, but they may be able to be satisfied with a car share program. So I think a more robust onsite car share program, like was proposed for the Freihoff site, might be something to consider and look at. Certainly, we can't require that, but I think that that might be a convincing element of a TDM plan. Those are my comments for this question. Thank you.
Thanks. George.
Yeah, um, try not to be too repetitive of, of everyone else. I generally agree with a lot of the statements Laura, Sarah, Mark had made. Um, I, I believe this parking reduction is an aggressive ask and needs um substantial backup on how its impacts are mitigated. Um, I, you know, I, I understand that the applicant really wants to create a car free um environment. That's part of their mission. I would encourage the applicant to do some kind of um real restrictions on, on who rents these apartments. Um, and actually, you know, do something like um that they agree not to have a car, and that would solve a lot of things, and it would put their money where their mouth is. Um, so I'll put that out as one suggestion beyond TDM. Um, one thing that hasn't been mentioned that, that ML brought up earlier is around um parking for the commercial space. And I understand what's code, what's there today. Obviously, those commercial spaces are well parked, probably overparked. Um. But as the site gets built out and others get built out, these businesses um are gonna need parking. They're gonna need parking for some of their employees, and they're gonna need parking for some of their customers. Um, I'll give a topical example of one um that I use every week down there. So my kids go to uh the Food Lab, which is a great facility right next to Bot's Car. They do, they go to Food Lab twenty minutes after school. And I drive them down um from foothills all the way downtown. Um, some could take a bike. I drive them. Um, I think almost everybody else who goes to that food camp drives their kids from all over Boulder to get them there in a twenty minute period. Um, it's congested. Uh, it takes a good twenty to thirty minutes just to find a spot. Luckily, they have one loading zone that, that is pretty emptied up. So the, the question is, is this a problem now for the site today where it's located? Um, it, it may not be as long as nothing else gets built out there. But I think our job is, as the planning board, is to also think through the, the long-term future, both the carless long-term future, but also the reality and practicality if we want successful small businesses in our core. As what has been talked about, you know, there's all kinds of small businesses that have all kinds of issues in Boulders, and this is one of them. Um, and so I don't want it lost, that just because code states one thing. Um, we are, we are, we are removing two businesses that are well parked, where people park there every day. And we're coming back with two thousand square feet of commercial, which I think is great. Um, but I think um it needs to be thought through on how those businesses function, um, both from the customer and um the employee side, along with the rest of the parking that's already been discussed. So I won't, I won't belabor that point anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, thank you, John. Um. I, I will absolutely agree with what George said about the commercial. I think that is something that needs to be thought through when this comes back. Uh, we can't assume that the employees are gonna buy a spot in the parking building and you know, they will disperse into the neighborhood. So that, I think, needs to be um on the radar of the applicant. Um, the issue with the overall parking reduction, I personally and professionally find it absolutely brilliant. If, if we don't start prioritizing our land use and create this kind of like big move um with parking reduction, uh, you know, where do we begin? So I, I am not opposed to the concept. What I find problematic, or what I think needs attention, is where is the interim ground to get us to that no car world that they are proposing? And I'm looking at the map that they provided on AO one one. And they identified all the parking, public and private parking. I'm guessing there are lots that are adjacent to the project. And I'm wondering as a solution, I think there've been other options, the Eco Pass and the Car Share. As another strategy is, can there be some kind of a um kind of parking rental for those that don't either fit in the building or are outpriced by whatever the building is gonna charge to park in some of these adjacent parking lots so that they don't spill into the neighborhood. Um. We've got that resource. I don't know how full those lots are. I'm looking, there's like, I don't know. There's ten of them um a- around the building. Is there something that can be uh directly proposed in collaboration with the city to provide kind of overflow parking opportunities in those public lots? I, I think the building is proposing a future. I think we need to be able to get there, and that is gonna entail us weaning ourselves from our cars. And that doesn't happen instantly. So I think these interim steps um are gonna be vital to the success of the, of the project. You know, so we've got the car share, we've got the um uh, the parking district, uh Eco Passes, and perhaps a rental agreement with some of these public parking um sites. So I, I think we need to see uh some more aggressive um management of where are these cars? We know we're not gonna get zero people coming with zero cars to fill all this project. We just, that's not gonna happen in an instant. But um so I agree with what they're trying to do. I think that there needs to be an interim plan. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll throw in my two bits worth. I amazingly enough, I, I agree with almost everybody on, almost everything that they've said. I'd like to add uh a couple points. One is that uh, it seems to me that we do have an example of quite aggressive parking management uh that came uh when the uh Google project was approved, where there were a number of requirements placed on, on the, on Google, on the tenant there regarding uh how they uh dealt with uh, with parking issues in that area. And among them were limitations on how many employees would be allowed to park onsite and uh uh arrangements of that nature. And so I think uh that's something that the uh staff can go into, into more detail than I can, but we do have uh an example of how fairly aggressive parking management can take place. The second uh point I'd like to make is that uh I think that the applicant can uh suggest not uh accepting tenants with cars uh as, as a, as a part of the contract and lease that they enter into, and that it's not unreasonable for the city to require that uh if it decides that's appropriate. Thirdly, um, I am always reminded that uh, even if somebody has lived in a, in a neighborhood for fifty years, that's, doesn't give them the right to a parking place in front of their house on a public street uh in a uh more than, than a newcomer. So I think the rate, the logical way to deal with that issue is with the neighborhood parking permit uh requirement program. And we have plenty of examples of how that has been dealt with in other neighborhoods. Um, and then finally, uh, I, I would just like to say with respect to bike parking, I I understand that some people have expensive bikes that they want to protect, but I think in a three hundred foot uh apartment to expect everybody to bring their bike in and, in there, in that apartment and and keep it in there when space is at such a premium, I find it uh uh unlikely. And I think that the, the, the plans should allow for a, a much more significant ground level common parking area that is walkable and protected. Okay, any further comments on, on this question? All right, let's move ahead to the building design and, and site layout. This is the fun part. Sarah?
All right, I was aiming for both raising my hand and unmeeting at the same time. Um, so uh, I just want, I have two things. One is I wanna say that I agree with the staff's uh comments on building design. Um, I, I know that the box that you all designed, that you drew um is not the final, what the final look will be. Uh, I would hope that um if you're, that you're, it's not gonna be a white building. I think that's just the I hope you'll use some natural or natural looking products. Um, I'm not a huge fan of that dog area. That seems like a, like a weird, a weird place to to, to do that. Um, I, I know you're trying to utilize the setback in an effective or you, or productive way. Uh, uh, but it's a, you know, this is a very walkable neighborhood that you are building, you will be building in, and folks can go take their dogs for a walk. No problem. And I think that might be better used um as a basis for some actual landscaping um in, in perhaps uh planting some trees that can grow tall relatively fast so that the folks who live on the second and third floor facing east will have um something green to look at, not just into the door windows or door, or walls of, of the building to the east. So those are my thoughts.
Sorry, George.
Yeah, no problem. Just wait, wait. Um, I, I, you know, in, in general, I, 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 I think staff's comments are, are kind of the same comments that I would have. Um, I think, I, I think it's in, I think it's I, I think it's in, I think it's ingenious that the developer's been able to figure out a way to put forty-five micro units on this smaller site. I, I think it's, I mean, I think that's a really interesting use of space. Um. And so I, I. It feels early on in the design phase based on what they presented and renderings. It feels like it can sh-. It can and should shift a lot from that. But as far as the layout goes. I think it's, I think it's a really interesting and smart use of space to achieve what they're trying to look to do. Save for the fact that. I think they've been a bit aggressive on parking to get there. Um, but we've already covered parking. Um, but that is where I could see the design um. Shifting beyond that. It, it still looks a little early as far as like materials and articulations of the building and, and some things that, that is just not apparent on here. Um, but I think the overall layout uh, makes sense to me in general. Um. And it kind of depends on the details of the design uh, sort of in the next iteration.
Okay, thanks Lisa.
Um, yeah, very similar. So I'll try to be brief. Um, I think the overall kind of site design and building design. Um, makes sense to me. Um, I already talked about parking in depth, but I appreciated kind of the brownstone direction. Um, that you're hoping to go in. Um, I appreciate the discussion, maybe some more roofline interest, um, if code will allow. Um. You know, and, and just generally those early sketches. Um, I think are, are attractive. Um, you know, again, exactly what they end up being, um. Will come later and should come later, but I think it's, it's going in a direction that, that I like.
Laura?
Thank you. I'll try to keep these, this brief. I also agree with a lot of what staff said and support their comments in the packet about the building design. I'll just comment on a couple of things. One is I love, I really love the reference photos that you folks have chosen on page twenty-two and twenty-three of the packet. And some of the things in there, like two of your very prominent photos have trees on every balcony. And I don't know if that is something that you can provide along with furnishing the apartments, but man, wouldn't it be nice to have all that green? On all those balconies. I think those are lovely. Um, with regard to the dog space, I get Sarah's point that that could also be a lovely landscaping space. Uh, I'll just submit that as a dog owner, sometimes you have a dog that needs to run and needs to run off leash. And it would be nice to have a nice little fenced spot where you can throw a ball or throw a frisbee. Probably not a frisbee, it would get away from you, but throw a ball, let your dog go a little bit wild, but you cannot do in that little public. Pocket park, which is not fenced and where your dog would need to be on leash. So I, I think that's worth thinking about, although if it goes away, I'm, you know, obviously we can't control that, but I, I do think having a fenced dog area is nice. Um, and uh, I, I do want to address another comment about the windows on one side, you know, i- if that changes in the design, I won't be mad. But I will say I have lived in a eight hundred and fifty square foot unit that only had north facing windows on one side. And it was okay, you know, um, there was a surprising amount of natural light. So I think as long as. The architects and designers can solve that natural light problem and make sure that each unit feels relatively welcoming. Um, which I'm sure you want to do for your tenants, because nobody wants to live in a dank, dark apartment. Um, the windows on one side doesn't, doesn't really bother me. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Mark?
Oh, I had to drop off. I, I couldn't get any sound for a little bit, so I missed some of those, some of your comments. So if I repeat any ones, I'm sorry. Um. In general, again, as I said earlier. This particular concept review I find to be thinner on. Details that I can comment on and I understand as a concept review, but you know, the uh, as Laura mentioned. The, the, the couple pages of Pinterest sort of great little images. I, I don't want anyone to be confused that that is somehow indicative. Of elements that this project uh, is specifically representing and uh, so. And, and George has mentioned, you know, um, just the idea of what we're being sold and what uh. Uh, anyway, I, I would appreciate uh, if next go around. Or as a, as a lesson to the applicant that uh, a little more detail, uh, specifically on the design. Uh, would be helpful is I, I, I look at the design and say, I'm not really sure. You know, what, what sort of surfaces, what sort of materials um, we're seeing are, you know. I, I, anyway, I, I, I find it thin, so I don't really have a whole lot of comment. But um, uh. You know, my recommendation has come back to site review with something that is um. Architecturally exciting and promising and um. And maybe really does incorporate some of the Pinterest photos that you used in your concept review packet. But thanks.
Okay, ML?
Thank you, John. Um, I just want to um. Kind of in some of the comments I made to, or questions I had with the um, applicant. I think. Given the size of the units, right? Two thirds of a double car garage, that, that's pretty small. Um, I think. Common area and storage are gonna be critical. And you know, they have kind of proposed storage area. And then they have the one common area, common room. Um. I think the evolution and development of those are gonna be critical to the livability of, of the units. And I agree with the prior comment about, yeah, let's provide enough bike storage that is beyond the units because um. It, that's valuable real estate inside the unit for, for living. Um. I do think that, again, given what the applicant is talking about doing on the site. The sustainability um, and sort of. That intent with who they are as a, as a developer. Um, I think I'm gonna see some answers to how much. On-site renewable are you really gonna be creating? Cause it's one thing. To, to propose that you are going to be um. Doing these sustainable things. They're talking about the carbon footprint of the building and a lot of that is, of course, in the materials. There's no less materials on this square footage, whether the building is, you know. Forty-six small units or twenty-five big ones, you know. The square footage of material is probably about the same, but reduction of carbon footprint, that's great. I'd like to see specificity on. How are you gonna offset your um. Carbon footprint that would be associated with tying to the grid. And that's in the photovoltaics. They, they did respond, they're gonna evolve the roof. And that's great. Um. And so I, I will be looking for. That sustainability component that um, is being proposed on the applicants. Um, from the applicant to have that actually show up in the next, in the next round. And yeah, those are my comments regarding the building.
Okay. Um, well, I'll, I'll wrap this up by saying that I, I don't. Hear anything that I disagree with from all of my colleagues and. So that's, that's very neat. A couple additional comments I would say is that. Uh, I, I think it would be great if uh, there was a little bit more variety in the nature of the. Apartments and efficiencies you're proposing. I, I think there is a demand for a variety of sizes. And I'd encourage you to consider providing that. Uh, secondly, uh, I think it would be great if you would consider doing some onsite affordable. Uh, units as well. And I'm aware of the economics uh. And incentives associated with decisions on that, doing offsite and onsite. But from, from a viewpoint of, of the neighborhood and the city's benefit. I, I think that uh, some onsite affordable units would be desirable. Um, and then finally, I would like to encourage uh. The uh, the issues associated with the open space around the, the building. Uh, as I think it was Sarah who talked about most uh, in greatest detail, be reconsidered uh. To uh. I'm, I'm very skeptical about the little plaza that is associated with the corner of uh, Twenty Second and Pearl. Uh, becoming either uh. An undesirably uh. Locked off. Area to keep uh, keep uh, non-residents out. And uh, I, I would think that would be uh, too bad if that happened. So it's a challenge to figure out how to set that up. To make it both attractive and acceptable to the residents in the neighborhood. But uh, that includes my comments. All right, our, so now we have responded to staff's uh, questions and now. Uh, I think uh, if any of the board have other comments about this project. Feel free. Don't limit yourselves. Any other thoughts? Okay. Well, then that concludes this concept review. I hope, I hope that, that it's useful to both staff and applicant. And uh, we'll move ahead to our other public hearing tonight, which is an annexation. Uh, and. Staff, that'll start out with a staff presentation also. So I'm, Charles, are you gonna? Take it from here?
Um, Shopnam will also be presenting this one this evening as well. So Shopnam, whenever you're ready.
Okay.
Thanks, Sarah. Um, just getting the PowerPoint up. Nope, that's not showing anything.
Oh, something's happening here.
Okay, are you able to see? The slide? Okay, thank you very much. So um. Our second item tonight is a request for annexation of near, of a nearly one acre property. Within initial zoning designation of residential low. This is located at twenty-four fifteen Vine Place. Also formerly known as forty-three forty-three Twenty Sixth Street. The applicant has requested annexation to connect the existing detached single family home to City Water and Service Services. In terms of the review process and criteria, annexation is a process by. Um, whereby land is incorporated into the municipal boundaries. And land may be considered for annexation if it complies with the state. Annexation statutes and the um. Policies of the comprehensive plan. This property is unique in that it's considered an enclave since the site is entirely contained within the boundaries of the city. There are special provisions in the state statutes for enclave properties, including a simplified annexation procedure. Referred to as a unilateral annexation. And the comprehensive um, plan provides a framework for annexation and urban service provisions within the city. Uh, specifically policy one point one seven states that the city will actively pursue annexation of county enclaves and other. Substantially developed area two properties. And when a property's annex zoning is established consistent with the land use designation in the land use map of the comp plan. An annexation agreement is also required to establish the terms and conditions of the annexation. Um, generally, these terms are based on the amount of development potential. Um. And then the uh, planning board must review the annexation and make a recommendation to city council on whether or not. The annexation should be approved and the terms and conditions and um, zoning that should be applied. So this site is located um, east of Venka Court and west of Vine Place. Majority of the properties to the west, south and east were annexed as part of a larger group. Um, group annexation in nineteen eighty-eight, I believe, and then the properties to the north were annexed um, in nineteen ninety-two. So these are the existing conditions on the site. The property is developed currently with a single family detached home. That's one story and the home was built in nineteen fifty-six. The site is located in the area two on um, the planning areas map of the comp plan. Area two is the service area at the city where annexation can be considered and the site is also recognized as an enclave. In terms of our um. Comp plan land use, the property is designated as. Uh, low density residential on the land use map with an anticipated density of two to six dwelling units per acre. So the applicant is requesting um, an RL one zoning consistent with the surrounding properties to the north and um, to the east. Excuse me, um, the RL one district is described as single family detached residential dwelling units at a low. To very low residential densities. Um, in terms of the annexation agreement, development potential does exist under the proposed zoning. And the annexation agreement is written to anticipate any future development of the property. The policies state that properties with significant redevelopment potential must provide a special opportunity or a community benefit to the city to offset any. Negative impacts of additional development. To meet this requirement, a community benefit package is proposed, which includes um. In this case, inclusionary housing fees, so paying two times the applicable cash and lo amount required for um. New dwelling unit and then um, there are some additional site improvements as well. The property, if it's subdivided or um. Or anytime prior to building permit for any attached. Or sorry, additional dwelling unit, the applicant will replace the existing driveway and attached. Public sidewalk with a driveway ramp and a detached five-foot sidewalk. There is also a plant investment fee. That's um, included in the annexation agreement, which is required to be paid prior to the first reading. In terms of noticing of the application, this was done consistently with the land use code. So written notifications mailed to all property owners within six hundred feet of the proposed development. Um, and a sign was posted on the property. Uh, staff does not, staff did not receive any public comments um, during the review. The three key issues identified by staff um, includes. Uh, the first one includes, does the annexation comply with the applicable state annexation statutes? The second one is, is the proposal consistent with the annex, with the city's annexation and other BBCP policies? And then lastly, is the initial zoning uh, appropriate for the subject property? So moving on to key issue one, um, in terms of the state law, the annexation petition is consistent with the statutory and constitutional requirements. The site meets the required one-sixth contingency to um, to current city properties. Um. There is also community interest in annexing the property as it is non-clay abandoned area two. And in terms of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, the site may be considered for annexation due to its designation as an area two property. Uh, and the city will again actively pursue enclave properties for annexation. The annexation will also allow connection of the existing home. To the city's water systems and will provide a critical public health benefit by providing safe and quality drinking water and reducing. to the city's water systems and will provide a critical public health benefit by providing safe and quality drinking water and reducing any public health threat. Um, and so at this time staff does find that the proposal is consistent with the annexation, uh, BBCP policies. And then lastly, in terms of the zoning, if a property's annexed zoning is established consistent with the goals of the land use map, um, of the BBCP. As I mentioned above, the majority of the site is designated as low-density residential, which anticipates a density of two to six dwelling units per acre or less, um. And, uh, staff has identified RL one as being, um, the applicable zoning with the highest density. So considering that the surrounding areas to the north and east are also zoned RL one, staff finds that the proposed zoning is consistent with the underlying land use designation and the community's desired future for the area. Considering all these factors, staff recommends, um, staff recommends that planning board adopt the following motion that's on the screen. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you. So, uh, before we move ahead, I, I just realized there may be a need to, uh, for people to declare whether there's any conflicts or need to, to recuse themselves on this matter. I, I need to make a declaration and that is that I, I know some of the people uh, involved with this, um, uh, on a social level. But I have no financial or personal interests in this, uh, annexation request and feel that I can deal with it fairly and objectively. So I'll continue to participate in this process. And, uh, I just opened it up for anybody else to, to mention that if they need to. Okay, thank you.
I would, I would also like to say that the, um, applicant is present tonight. If you had any questions for the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Right, Mark, questions?
Um, thanks, Shabnam, uh. You showed a, a map with the, all the surrounding properties in yellow and the, and the subject property in, in kind of a gray. Uh, does that indicate that all of the surrounding properties are currently within the city limits?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Um, and is there any, uh, historical or current access cul-de-sac to cul-de-sac from vine to the cul-de-sac that I believe is to the west?
Um, not that I'm aware of. There is, there is nothing there at this time.
So a, a lot of those, um, uh, the reason I ask is that, you know, we went through, uh, a development phase of building a bunch of large lot homes on cul-de-sacs that are particularly unfriendly to, um, people trying to get one place or another somewhere outside of their car. And, uh, and in some of those places, um, there used to be historical uh, footpaths or soft surface connections, uh, and then, uh, and then the city I, I have found in, in some other places has been, um, poor in trying to maintain those, those access points. And so, uh, I would hate to, uh, miss an opportunity to either, uh, connect, reconnect or formally establish a connection between those, those cul-de-sacs. So I, I'm, and I can't really pull up Google Earth right now because I'm, again, I, I don't have the kind of computing power that I would need and look for any of those connections or anything. So, um, anyway, I, I, uh, I, I'm, I'm concerned about that and it's, it'd be a shame if we didn't, couldn't create some sort of connection between those two cul-de-sacs.
ML?
Thank you, John. Um, so Shabnan, I'm looking at the annexation uh, policy in the, in the BBCP one dot one seven, um, E. And the question I am wondering about. You know, one of the things that came out of that IH meeting last week, um, that stuck with me was when I saw this, the statement that our number one affordable housing tool has been annexation. So the question I have, given the information in E of the annexation of the Boulder Valley Comp Plan, um, the square footage of this site is an acre. The Boulder Valley Comp Plan, um, uh, land use establishes two to six dwelling units per acre. Um, the RL one, that would be the city zoning gives, uh, establishes a seven thousand square foot per unit. And given both of those, this site could potentially have six units on it. Um, is there anything? Um, in this annexation um, discussion that refers to, can we get more housing? I, I, I understand that the applicant has put forth that they will divide the property into two. Um, has there been any conversation about the potential for significant development, which is right, three times, right, two to six, that's, that could be considered significant just as a percentage, um, to get more housing out of this annexation?
Sure, thank you, ML. Um, the applicant is, um, they, they have the intent to subdivide the property to lots. I think early on in staff's review process, um, we did explore, um, you know, the part, subdividing the property into more than just two lots and there were a lot of utility limitations that affect this property. Um, I, we don't have any engineering staff on, um, the call at this time, but uh, just based on the conversations we had in utility and engineering review, they were really just limited to, to dwelling units on the property because there is not the utility infrastructure there in place to serve more than two at this time.
And I think really what the issue is, is ML is that the mains dead end in either of the cul-de-sacs on either side of the lot. And you would need to extend mains and make sure that there is enough pressure to do so across private property. Um, so that presents a number of challenges and just even servicing the property. So technically, it would be possible if we had the utilities to service it in this case. Um, it would be a pretty difficult ask just by, by virtue of how everything has redeveloped around this lot, which you know, sometimes can be a challenge with enclaves when they're the last property in. But we did look at it with our utility staff in detail and it's, um, a pretty big lift.
So, am I hearing that the limitation is in the utilities? And is that, um, to accomplish seven parcels versus two parcels? That cost is prohibited or is it just like technically not possible? Is it cost or is it pass, is it capability?
I think, you know, ML, as you probably well know in your professional practice, when it comes to engineering, um, anything is possible. But I think there are some, um, prohibitive costs associated with it. And I think there's also some private property rights associated with um, crossing a piece of private property with a new main, um, and whether or not, you know, just based on the position of the home that's directly on the west side of the property, whether or not, you know, from an engineering perspective, how disruptive that would be just with the way that the, the lot is situated. Um, we also haven't looked at the grades and what the invert elevations would look like. So, um, the land use considerations, I think that you're talking about wouldn't ordinarily be a problem through annexation. Um, especially since, you know, the zoning seems to support minimum seven thousand square foot lot sizes, um, in RL one, I think in this case, the considerations are really more access and um, how to serve the property with, uh, water and sewer in a way that, um, you know, doesn't disrupt other private property.
So I'm hearing that the staff has thoroughly investigated the possibility of getting more housing on this property. And, um, where, where we're at after a serious investigation on your part, is that correct?
We absolutely looked at the possibility of adding additional units as opposed to just subdividing it into two lots.
Right.
Um, again, from a zoning and a land use perspective, I think that's something that's possible. The issue that we're running into is really more around utilities.
Yeah. Okay, well, very unfortunate, but, um, I'm going to keep hunting for the conversation of, um, let's not end up with luxury housing at the end of the day every other minute on this board. And we know that, you know, those lots are gonna differ than luxury housing because they're big. Um, but thank you. I do appreciate that staff, uh, took the time and consideration to, um, see if, see what might have been possible.
Okay. Any other questions? I have a, a real quick question. Uh, in the language that you've used here, you, you've said several times that the majority of the property is designated as low-density residential. But in the maps, it looks like all of the property. What, what's the reason for that wording?
It is, uh, it is all the properties. Um, I might have been using that to talk about the zoning, the land use zoning where you know, to the north, again, to the north and east, it's RL one versus RLE to the south and um, the west of the lot. But, um, you're right, it's, it's not majority, it's, it's all of it is, um,
Okay.
LR, yeah.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to understand. Okay, any other questions of staff? All right, we, we can give the applicant a chance to uh, address the matter here. Do we have the applicant present?
We do. Paul Calgano, um, has the ability to share his screen.
Okay. Let's, okay, Mr. Calcanyo?
Um, thank you for having me this evening. Yes, and, um, Shabnab did a, a, um, very thorough job of, um, representing the annexation of the one acre parcel. And yes, we did, um, ask for a, um, initially a, a four lot subdivision, but, um, due to the limited, um, availability of water. Um, the city planning told us that, um, two would be the maximum because of the surrounding properties and not having any easements to, um, to, um, do anything else with the water. So, um, the property is currently occupied by, uh, oh, Beth Beardsley, who's been living there for over fifty years. And, uh, the house that you showed the picture of, she plans on staying in that house as long as she can. She's a seventy-five-year-old widow and, um, uh, she plans on staying in the existing house. Um, like I say, for as long as she can. And, um, the annexation, yeah, meets all of the, um, state and city requirements and we're asking for approval of, um, the, um, annexation. Um, and, um, here for any questions, if you have any other questions.
Okay, thank you. So are you, uh, an agent of Ms. Beardsley? Are you the owner?
I'm her, I'm, uh, her representative in this, um, annexation, yes.
Okay.
I'm a friend of the, I'm a friend of hers.
Okay, any questions of Paul? All right, thank you. Then we'll, uh, we'll move on to the public, uh, hearing portion of this hearing.
Okay.
Who wants to speak to this? I don't see any hands. Do you, Vivian?
No, not yet. Request members to, please go ahead, raise your hand if you would like to speak. Give you a couple of seconds.
You're asking for members of the public who want to speak to this item. They may be confused and think you're asking for planning board members.
Oh.
Now, this is the, you said public hearing, John, right? You're ready to?
Yes, this is the public, uh, hearing.
Thanks, Laura.
Oh, I see, uh.
Okay, Lynn, you have, uh, are we doing two minutes or three minutes, John?
We can do three minutes here.
Okay, Devin, hope you're ready with the slide. Lynn, please go ahead. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Yes, done. Two seconds. I needed three minutes on the other thing. Done.
Thanks, Lynn. Thank you. Anybody else from the public wish to, to speak for this public hearing item? I see no other hands, John.
Okay, so I'll bring it back to board. So we are being asked to make a recommendation to council. Could, uh, staff, could you put the, uh, suggested, uh, the recommendation up so that we can review them? Thank you. Laura?
Uh, I'm short and sweet on this one. I had the same question as ML about, uh, you know, could this be, um, subdivided into more lots? I was encouraged to hear that the applicant actually requested more lot subdivision, a four lot subdivision. Um, and it's regrettable that the city can only accommodate two because of infrastructure, but that's the way it goes. So, um, I do think to answer the key issues, the annexation request complies with the applicable state annexation statutes and that it's consistent with the city's annexation and other BBCP policies. And I do find that the initial zoning of RL one is appropriate and consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay. Any other? Oh, Lisa?
Um, yeah, well, um, at, at risk of potentially hijacking, I'm scanning to see if I have any other hands. I think this might be a good time to either call the vote or to do a quick straw poll. And, and I feel like we might be able to move this item along, but I don't wanna have a chilling effect on discussion if someone else disagrees.
Given the lack of, uh, hands up, I think, uh, I'd invite you to make a motion.
Okay, great. Um, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Uh, I move to recommend to city council approval of the proposed annexation of the property located at twenty four fifteen Vine Place with an initial zoning designation of residential low one or RL one pertaining to case number LUR twenty twenty one zero 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 four eight, incorporating the staff member random as findings affect uh, subject to the recommended conditions of approval for the annexation as provided for in the proposed annexation agreement in attachment C.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mark? Okay. Uh, any discussion? All right, it's time for a vote. All in favor, please raise your hands.
I, I think it needs to be a voice vote, John.
Oh, okay. Laura?
Yes.
ML?
Aye.
Sarah?
Yep.
Mark?
Yep.
Lisa?
Aye.
George?
Yes.
And I vote aye also. So the recommendation is to council is unanimously adopted by planning board. Oh, thank you. All right, that brings to a close this item. And now we can just move into matters from staff and and board and council and everybody else. Oh, it called it. No, we have Kathleen here. Sorry. Kathleen is here to make a little presentation to us and, uh, and to ask for a planning board. And to ask for a planning board liaison.
Yes, I think I'm under matters, I think.
Okay.
That's right, yeah.
I I don't have the agenda in front of me, so I got confused.
Sorry. Got some weird lighting going on. Okay, hi, hello, everyone, great to see you all tonight. Good to see you, hello. Um, so my name's Kathleen King, I'm a principal planner with the city's comprehensive planning division, and I am here. With my colleague from transportation, Allison Moore Farrell. To request that the planning board appoint a member to serve as a liaison. To the Airport Community Conversation Working Group, which is an important volunteer community group. That will inform the Airport Community Conversation Project. So the city's recently launched a community engagement process to create a range of future scenarios. For how the city airport might evolve in the future. So we have a um brief presentation on the overall scope of the Airport Community Conversation Project. And um as well as some of the planned engagement. And then we will ask for the board to nominate and appoint a member to the working group. So I will turn it over now to the project manager, Allison. And she's gonna present this opportunity.
Perfect, thank you so much, Kathleen, I appreciate it. Hi, everyone, I'm Allison Moore Farrell with um Transportation and Mobility, Senior Transportation Planner. Um, I recognize a few of you, it's good to see you, and for those I haven't met, it's wonderful to meet you, thank you so much for having me this evening. Um, like Kathleen shared, I'll be sharing a brief presentation about the scope of this process. Um, and I I know you received in your packets some further information about that, as well as the consultant scope of work. And um we will be requesting a liaison from planning board to be on our community working group. So with that, I will share my screen. All right, can everyone see my presentation? Uh terrific, so um like Kathleen shared, we recently initiated.
It's not in a presentation mode, though, which perhaps you'd like it.
I can go ahead and change that. Thank you. Um, we recently initiated um a Boulder Airport Community Conversation, and um as you saw in your packets and you may know. Um, this actually was a suggestion in the um Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan and the most recent update to have this. Um, conversation prior to the Airport Master Plan update um that will be occurring soon. So that was part of the um initiation of this, so I'll share the background and goals, community conversation strategy, and our schedule and next steps. Um, so the the um Boulder Municipal Airport is owned and operated by the City of Boulder in partnership with the F A A. Um, it is a general aviation airport with two runways. It offers business, private, recreational, and emergency response and recovery services. Um, there are training flight schools and robust glider operations. So goals for this project is really understanding community aspirations around the airport and the future goals for the airport. Will be identifying challenges and opportunities for consideration. And from there, developing a range of scenarios and identifying a preferred scenario and determining next steps from there. So this is a multi-pronged engagement process. We're starting with um community conversations with on and off sta- airport stakeholders. Um, so this includes pilots, tenants, nearby neighbors, folks in um nearby mobile home communities, business owners. And so we've had some really in-depth conversation with those folks and really understanding the impacts. Um, that the airport has and and that relationship with the community. And folks have been sharing their desired outcomes for future airport operations. Um. And we've been really learning a lot about the community and their current relationship with the airport. Um, and with this, we are consistently consistent with the racial equity plan. Like I mentioned, these stakeholder interviews um are a diverse set of um residents in the city. We've also interviewed a few people um in the county, given given the location of the airport. Um, and we do have interpretation services for these, and we allow participants to really share their perspective. Um, and their lived experience of living near the airport and participate in airport activities. So we're wrapping up the stakeholder interviews and moving into the next part of the engagement process, which will be the community working group. Um, and this is where we'll be requesting um a liaison from planning board. We'll also be having a liaison from the Transportation Advisory Board and a number of other community members. Um, I will share a a small update from from when we shared um the packet with you. We have decided to um expand the engagement scope, so instead of three community working group meetings, we are expanding it to have five community working group meetings and three open houses. So that is a an expansion that I did want to share with you because that would affect your commitment. Um, and that first community working group meeting will be in March of twenty twenty three. And the goal here is to understand the airport background, history, and use it as a visioning workshop. The remaining community working group meetings will be about establishing priorities, outlining outlining a range of scenarios. And digging into each of those, um and what each of those will mean and impacts to the community, and then identifying a preferred scenario. And potential members here would be airport tenants, Boulder residents, underserved community members, the business community, the scientific community, and city board members such as yourselves. And I'll share that we are um going to be soliciting an interest form for the community working group. Um, we'll likely be releasing that next week publicly and providing a lot of outreach to a variety of community members. Um, and different groups that um are impacted by the airport, and we encourage as many people as possible to apply so that we can review those and make sure it is. As equitable a group as possible when we come together and work on this. Like I mentioned, we are expanding the open houses from two to three open houses. Um, and here's a brief overview of what each of those open houses will be. We'll be sharing the history of the airport, gathering feedback. Um, I know myself, having having been on this project for a few months, I've learned so much about Boulder's airport, and it's been really fascinating. Um, so we'd love to share that with folks who will be attending the open houses. Um, and then later on in the um open houses, we'll be sharing the scenarios and the preferred scenario that the community working group will be working on. And from there, our consultant team will be working on the alternatives analysis of these different scenarios. Um, so that we can evaluate those, we'll be pulling some high level financial um implications of each of the scenarios and being in bringing a preferred scenario forward. So with that, I'll share our schedule and next steps. Like I mentioned, we are continuing our stakeholder interviews and we'll be wrapping those up fairly shortly. Starting in March, we'll be conducting the community working group meetings and public open houses. And from there, we'll be developing the alternatives, and then in the fall, presenting the final report. Um, and we will be bringing that to council in late twenty twenty three, early twenty twenty four is the plan. So at this point, I'll just ask if you have any clarifying questions about the engagement process, and from there, we can discuss um a liaison appointment. So, planning board, if you have any questions about the engagement process, I'd be happy to answer any of those.
Lisa?
Yeah, could we go back to the slide of um who's gonna be on the?
The community working group?
Me, yeah, thank you. Potential members. Um, so so both of the things that I mentioned may. May fall under this, but I would. Strongly recommend inclusion. Of um someone. Who specifically provides um. Support during emergency activations. So E E O C, specifically wildfires, police. Um, and flood. Um, like when we lose all our roads and can't get out, um, you know, I I would like someone with that expertise on there because. I think if we don't include that voice on there, then it could very easily get alighted and ignored. Um. And and that's one of the main reasons why I would argue for having some kind of continued airport, um is a public safety and disaster. A response, and then the other thing is I see scientific community, which may include this. Um, but I would have someone from C U specifically, probably aligned with science um on the board and and I would. Strongly recommend that those not be potential members, but that. I I I would have a hard time supporting whatever came out of it without those people in the room.
Certainly, yeah, yeah. Yeah, thank you so much for bringing those up, but I'm just smiling and nodding because. Um, those were also brought up by city council when we brought this to them, so I'm just kind of putting a star next to them that that you're identifying those as well, so thank you so much for bringing that up.
Hi, Mike. Sorry, go ahead, John.
Hi, Allison.
Hi, Mark.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Um. Did this uh? This process, this this project. Didn't it start out? With a broader? When I say a broader question, a a more of a question of. What can we do? What is within the world of possibility? Uh, at the airport, what what can we do at the airport? Does it need to be an airport? Do we, does the community want it to be an airport? Maybe the answer is yes, maybe the answer is no, but um. Wasn't it e- essentially a a much bigger question? Brought about by uh housing. S- specifically housing advocates. That said, gee, like like Counselor Wallach. Who said, you know, we could. We could have housing at the airport. And uh I don't want to put words in his mouth, but gee, we could have housing out there and we don't necessarily need an airport. I I I am I? Um. Is that, is that what your perception is of the initial question? And is that still the question, or is is um, has the mission? Changed from that?
Yeah, Mark, that's a great question, thank you. Um, and I'll share my understanding, and Kathleen, feel free to jump in if there's additional background um you have from from the mention in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. Um, my understanding that um. That it is indeed a a broad scope of what this could be, so so literally anything is on the table in terms of what the community. Um, wants to bring in terms of goals and what could be at the airport, and that's part of. Um, conversations we've had thus far with community members, and also what'll really be happening at the open houses of of folks sharing that, so. Really, everything's on the table of of what community members want for the airport, so. Um, so it's a fairly broad what it could be, um certainly, and and this is a fairly high level. Um, process, so so you're correct in that it it could be a whole, a whole range of options. Um, identified, which is why we're we're working through those different scenarios and. And I do believe it'll be one of those processes where there's a lot of different pieces in each scenario. Um, you know, that that could be a wide spectrum, so so you're correct in that, Mark.
So, um. So I I I'm just harkening back to uh. Something that that may seem si- insignificant compared to the airport, but. Uh, I was involved in the West Trail Study Area, and if you want to get people riled up in Boulder, you want to talk about. Especially our 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 trail system, our open space, and especially the western portion. And um, you know, we we actually cycled through. Uh, more than one facilitator, um, and. Because the city put itself. In a centralized role within that process. Anyway, it was um the. The outcome uh to some. Had a had somewhat of a predetermined feel. And I I'm I'm going to question the uh, the hiring of a consultant. Who, rather than just a kind of a neutral facilitator, a consultant that has. A a focus and and expertise, expertise is good, I'm not against expertise. Um, from all sorts of different quarters. But uh. What I understand is you've hired a uh consultant who will also facilitate. This and um and they are. Uh, airport experts, they aren't. Parkland experts, they aren't housing experts, they're airport experts, do I have that correct?
Um. Yes and no, and I'll I'll share why, so the um, the prime that was selected was Kim Lee Horn, and they have a large team underneath him. So Kim Lee Horn is, I'm sure, as you know, is a large multidisciplinary firm, so. The uh, the discipline that we're using primarily is their engagement and outreach team. We do have an individual on there who is their um airport subject matter expert, so he is there to advise and to interpret some of the language and. Um, and help us with that, but we are utilizing them for their engagement and outreach folks, we, um, one of their sub consultants is C D R, which is a local. Um, engagement firm, I'm sure some of you are familiar with them, and and they'll be doing the facilitation of the community working group, so. So yes, they they do um have that airport expertise, but we are utilizing their engagement and outreach um resources for the the prime services.
Yeah, okay. Um, last thing I'll say is I agree with Lisa that I think uh. Um, the the types of community members she mentioned in that area of expertise. Uh, it would be would be um uh valuable, as would um, I think, uh. Uh, housing advocates or uh people advocating for a different view of this particular. Piece of city property, and and the reason I say that is not because I'm. Uh, necess- I'm I'm not gunning for housing at the air- airport, I'm not gunning for the airport to remain an airport. But in my experience and running for council and being involved with the community over the last many years. Is that um, the the community really wants to know and feels like they want to, I I. What they really want to know is what's in the realm of possibility, and when someone says, oh, no, you can't. You can't, uh, you know, we owe the F A A millions and millions and we can't do that. Or, you know, we could easily take out the airport and we could just. Have housing there and we could have a couple of thousand units there. That they want to feel like the answers they're getting are um uh valid and unbiased, so I would just encourage. To have people on this working group that um uh, that the answers. That they come back with. Reek of truly um, what's in the in the realm of possible and unbiased and. And so that the the community doesn't feel like it was fixed one way or the other, predetermined one way or the other. So that's it, thank you so much, Allison.
Great, thank you, Mark. Yeah, and and I will share, it's really important for us, for both the community working group and public open house, to really share. Um, the background of the airport, what um, what is possible and and that sort of thing, and really sharing that history so that everyone can can have that baseline knowledge, so thank you for highlighting that.
Laura?
Thank you. Well, I'm hearing some things I really um am appreciating very much, so thank you, Allison, for this presentation. Really glad to hear that C D R is involved as your facilitator. Um, they're colleagues of mine in my field of public policy facilitation, they have a great reputation. I think they will provide that neutral facilitation, so I'm really glad to hear that they're on board as a sub to Kim Lee Horn. Uh, also really glad to hear that um Transportation Department is considering that all options are on the table and are open. I will say that um, you know, that that B V C P policy six point two six. I think it's more than a suggestion, I think it's a promise, it says, at the time of the next airport master plan. The city will work with the community to reassess the potential for developing a portion of the airport. For housing and neighborhood serving uses. And that is kind of the initiation of this whole thing is to look at developing a portion of the airport for housing and neighborhood serving uses, so I'm going to very strongly second. Mark's suggestion that you specifically need outreach to housing advocates. In both your interviews uh on your community working group, and make sure they're aware of this process so they can help develop those scenarios, that vision. Because as we all know, the topic of housing in Boulder is incredibly complex. And a lot, and we have needs around low income, moderate, and middle income housing. Where a community owned, a city-owned piece of property. Provide rare opportunities that do not exist uh in our normal development process, working with private property and private developers. And so I think really exploring what is that potential. It needs to be not just we're open to it, but that is part of our mission. Um, and that we do expect that at least one and maybe more of those scenarios. Will live up to that promise in the B V C P that says. We are reassessing the potential for developing a portion of the airport for housing and neighborhood serving uses, I think that should be an expectation. Not just a maybe it will organically arise, you know, I think that that is a conversation that's already been happening in the community. For many years, before my tenure here, probably before most of the people who are working on this issue. Uh, came to work with the city, and so I think that history is also important to understand, is why are people looking to this piece of property as potential? And so I think that history is also important to understand is why are people looking to this piece of property as potentially having redevelopment potential for housing and neighborhood serving uses? That said, I think that, you know, all of the potential members that you have listed, there needs to be a really robust conversation of what is that potential for airport growth and expansion? What are the benefits? What are the costs? Who benefits from it? What are the impacts? Same thing with redeveloping it for housing. What do we gain? What do we lose? What are the impacts, the benefits? Who benefits? What are the costs? I think all of that needs to be very explicitly programmed in from the very beginning that we will explore that. And there may be other ideas that arise in this process that will also be incorporated into the scenarios. But I, I do think that really honoring what's in that BVCP 6.26 will be crucial for the legitimacy of this process in terms of data gathering and answering people's questions and really looking at that. Or it will come back up again, right? It's not gonna, if we don't do it, it's not going to go away. So I think this is the time, this is the place that we can really seize the day and look at that. And so I do have a couple of questions. So I am curious to know who has already been interviewed and whether any housing advocates either are on that list or could be added to that list. And then what are the questions that have been asked at those interviews? I think Amalia Andrews offered to provide that list of questions at the City Council Study Session on this.
Certainly. I can follow up with the, the list of questions. I, I have, I can dig for that on my documents. I do have that. And we, we have been cognizant about having a fairly even mix of folks who are involved with the airport and as well as folks who are impacted by the airport and operator live off the airport. I can look into housing advocates for interviews. I've been on probably about three quarters of the interviews. I'm not thinking of one off the top of my head, but I will look back at our list and, and I can certainly follow up with you on that.
Great. Thank you so much. I am curious how those members are going to be selected and appointed and/or appointed to the Community Working Group. Who makes that selection? Is that a City Council selection? Is that a staff selection?
Certainly. Yeah. So this is a pretty typical process. That's a great question. For a lot of working groups we have through our transportation master planning process and a lot of different planning processes. So what we'll be doing is, like I mentioned, we have a, we'll have a solicitation and we'll be having a broad outreach for that. We have our engagement and communications team working on, on outreach for that. And from there, we'll go ahead and select, it will be a staff selection of folks who will be like, like I mentioned, the potential members in this group and making sure we have an equitable mix of folks. We'll be running it through the racial equity instrument. We'll be running it through our engagement team and making sure we have the, the, a good mix of, of folks who are involved with the airport and impacted by the airport. And that's throughout this entire process, we've learned folks who will be involved with that. So that's, that's how we'll be selecting the Community Working Group members. We are aiming to keep it about 20 to 30 people as we found in past working groups. That's an effective number in terms of really digging into the issues and being able to get that work done.
And those members are selected by staff or by City Council? And is it transportation staff, planning staff?
Yeah. And it will be the transportation team on this. Yeah.
Okay. I would highly recommend that in that group of off-airport stakeholders, that there is not just one, but a good number of people who understand Boulder's housing issues. General community members are great. Neighbors are great. People who understand the noise impacts and, and that kind of thing are great. But I think that, you know, if we're going to live up to 6.26, we need to have more than one, multiple people who have a vision and an understanding of what this property could become for housing, if we're going to live up to that promise. And then I, I guess I have a question about how you're going to develop that scenario. Does, does, if there is a, assuming that there will be at least one scenario that looks at seriously, what could go on this property for housing? You know, is it low income, moderate income? Is it market rate? How much of it would we need to sell off to be able to fund back the commitments to the FAA, that kind of thing? Is BHP going to be involved? Is Planning and Development Services staff funded to do that kind of planning like they did for the East Boulder Sub-Community Working Group? Does your consultant have that expertise? I'm just, I just want to make sure that you have the capacity to really do a robust vision.
Certainly, Laura. Thank you for asking. And I'll share that I don't want to get too ahead of it in terms of the process. So I don't want to state, yes, we will be, you know, looking at this percentage and that. And so I don't want to get too ahead in the process. But we do, one of the reasons we did choose this consultant is because they do have that capacity in order to dig in and, and in order to develop those scenarios. So we do have confidence in them and the capabilities to do that. And we do have Kathleen King is on our team and we have different folks in, in different departments who are on our internal team who can support and reach out as needed.
That's wonderful to hear because as you know, Boulder's housing market is a bit unique and our regulations are, are a bit unique. And so really understanding what could go there, you read, need really local knowledge.
Definitely.
Great to have Kathleen on board. She did such a fantastic job with the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. And there's really good tight connections there.
Definitely.
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, just a couple more.
Yeah.
Climate, climate change impacts. Is this for the different scenarios that are developed? Is there going to be an analysis of the climate change impact in terms of emissions in particular? Because as you know, Boulder has really strong goals around reducing emissions, reducing our climate change impact, reducing single occupancy vehicle miles traveled, for example, in our building code, all of that. We're trying to reduce our climate change impact. So it feels like that's an important consideration for what happens on this hundred and some acre parcel.
And that certainly will be part of the process. We will be running this through the sustainability framework. So that will be part of the process. As we are expanding the scope, I can't speak specifically to what level that will be, but it will be run through that process.
Good to know. I, I assume the group is going to have some kind of a charter, this community working group?
Correct.
Will it have a charter that's developed? Okay, that's good to know. I would really recommend that that charter be really clear on how decisions are made. I'm assuming you're not trying to do consensus building with the group of the group is going to select the preferred alternative. I'm assuming that the group is more advisory to staff and the consultant and that you'll take those things into account. But I think, you know, just like we pin down who makes the decision, when something comes to planning board or to City Council, I think knowing who that recommendation is actually coming from is going to be something that you're really going to want to clarify with the group. So they don't have mismatched expectations about, about that process.
Definitely. Great recommendation. Thank you.
And then last question, sorry, I know I'm taking a lot of time. Super interested in this. And I've been following this for a long time, since before I was on the East Boulder Sub-Community Working Group. But, but through that as well. So I didn't see in the scope presentations to planning board. I did see presentations to City Council. So is somebody else going to be bringing information back to planning board? Was, is that the job of the liaison? Is that staff? How is planning board going to keep abreast?
Yeah, that certainly will be one of the roles of the liaison to the planning board. And Kathleen and I were just discussing that we can, you know, once, once the liaison is selected, I can certainly work with them to figure out the best way to bring information back to the planning board in addition to the liaison sharing. So I can certainly come back to planning board, especially because we, we have now expanded the timeline a bit as I just shared. So I can certainly work with the liaison on the details of that.
Great. And I, I love seeing that you expanded the timeline because you know, June or July of this year seemed really ambitious for all that you had planned. So I think you have a expanding, it was a good, a good choice. So thank you very much. I know a lot of my questions were specifically focused on this housing, but only because that's where I'm seeing a gap. I want you to know I'm a hundred percent supportive of developing scenarios that look at expanding the airport, enhancing what's there. I think that that alternative scenario should be very thoroughly explored and advocated for on equal footing with any other scenarios that might be developed.
Great. Thank you so much, Laura. I appreciate the input.
Looks like Brad has his hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask maybe for my own benefit, but maybe on behalf of some of the board members who might be wondering to this specific ask of the Transportation Department in this regard is, I believe for just a single liaison. And then my follow-up question was going to be kind of that reporting back and forth structure. You answered that a little bit there, Allison. I do want to share with the group that, you know, part of the effort of the city to maintain coordination between departments and between boards, while still being efficient with meetings and, you know, schedules and all those types of things, is some of this cross-representation in the working group. So appreciate that there's an opportunity for a, what I understand to be a single planning board member, if you can clarify that.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that question, Brad. Yes, a single planning board liaison. While we'd love input, a part of the role of the liaison would be to bring it back to the board. And, and like I mentioned, we, you know, we are aiming to keep it in the 20 to 30 range of folks. And as, as Laura and others were mentioning, there's a lot of folks we'd like to have involved with the community working group. So we do need to be really cognizant of, of, of that number.
Yeah. And that would just remind the board too, that as with any of the items we put in the packet, always feel free to reach out to the case manager, planner, in this case Allison, with follow-up questions. John, I don't know that you and I or anybody else on staff had a chance to discuss the mechanism we were going to use this evening to determine that person.
I'm losing you, Brad.
I was just saying, I, I don't know that you had determined a mechanism for determining who that single liaison would be, but I'd be happy to share any thoughts on how the board might want to select that person tonight.
Okay, when we get to that point, we can talk about it. I, I have a couple of questions. One, first of all, I'd like to say that I think Laura's and Mark's points are excellent and I agree with them. Because the reason this, this exercise is taking place is, is because of there, there's a history behind it.
Yes.
I would like very much to make sure there's not a predetermined outcome. But the, the other question I have is why, why is Planning Department not doing this? I would think that this is a, a question that would be logically within the Department of Planning activities. Given, given its magnitude and relevance to many different departments.
Yeah.
I wonder if Brad might have some thoughts about that or, or you.
I'm happy to start or you can, Brad, either way.
Go ahead.
Well, I'll offer my opinion first, which is just that, you know, we are blessed as, as a city to have wonderful transportation planners who are trained planners like Allison to be able to facilitate these. As you know, we do have cross-coordination with Kathleen being involved in that. But we also recognize that the starting point for the history of the airport is its current state. And so I think there was just a very understanding among the city leadership that it would be appropriate for transportation and mobility to be the lead on this. But as with all of the comprehensive planning and master plans that we do in the city, we recognize it's cross-disciplined and cross-departmental. So it feels very comfortable to me and that would, that would be my response to that hopefully. That is consistent with what your thoughts are.
Yeah, thank you so much, Brad. So the airport actually falls under the purview of the Transportation and Mobility Department within the city of Boulder and is managed by the department and it's actually under the purview of the Transportation Advisory Board. So, so just kind of a overview, John, that, that's why it is managed by the Transportation Department, but we do recognize, of course, there's, there's a lot of overlap and importance from the Planning Department, which is why, you know, reached out to Kathleen King pretty much the week I, I got, you know, started working on this. So we, we recognize there is a lot of cross-departmental work on this.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I, I guess, I hope you heard what Macon Coles had to say in the public comment section of this meeting and that you take that into account. We don't have some sort of a default position, which is just continuing with the present, that this is a real examination of, of our options. But
This is, yeah. And I'll, and I'll share, you know, I'm, I'm very happy that it was brought up in the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan because, you know, we're, we're really looking forward to improving this, the airport and whatever, whatever that outcome is. We are looking forward to an improvement.
Okay, thank you. ML?
Yeah, I just have a, an observation. If I understood, Allison, what you were saying, that it will be the consultant who will be developing the scenarios as opposed to our city planning department? Is that correct?
The Community Working Group will be doing the majority of the work. Then the, of, of working on the scenarios, bringing those ideas together. And then the consultant will be digging and developing those scenarios, identifying cost benefit of those and really fleshing out those scenarios. So the Community Working Group can dig into those and make some of those decisions.
And, and this, it just seems that it should be done by our planning department. Why wouldn't it be done in our planning department?
This is typical in a lot of our transportation planning studies that we've conducted in the past. Staff is very involved, as is the Community Working Group in terms of capacity. That is why we hire consultants for some of these roles for, for things like scenario development.
And I can, I'm just, the intent that it isn't just a transportation problem, but that it is a bigger consideration. Sorry, Kathleen.
Yeah, no problem. I, I just wanted to mention, you know, my involvement and role in the project, especially when this project comes back to planning board to look at the different scenarios is I will, you know, be providing a staff evaluation of how the scenarios line or don't align with the comprehensive plan, how well it plays or doesn't play with recommendations in the East Boulder Sub-Community Plan. So there will definitely be planning involvement and evaluation of the different scenarios and ultimately the preferred scenario. And we'll be sharing that information through the liaison and, and at future planning board meetings.
Thank you for that. I appreciate.
Laura.
I wanted to ask if you considered getting a liaison from HAB as well as Planning Board and TAB? Since, you know, again, that 6.26, reevaluating the potential to redevelop a portion of the airport for housing and neighborhood serving uses, seems like an appropriate subject matter for HAB to weigh in on.
Certainly. That's not our current intention, but I will circle back with the project team. I think that's a great suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. What, can I ask one more question? BHP, how do you anticipate BHP might be involved, if at all?
Sure. Yeah, we have been in touch with BHP. I, I have relationships over there that I have worked with. So we've let them know that this process is, has been initiated and we will be involving them in the process.
Great. Thank you.
Just to add, you, either BHP or Housing and Human Services, I would think both have relevant interests. Okay. Any other questions or comments? So we've been asked to, to provide a liaison to this after. And I think the best way to do that is to see who's interested and then take a vote. So now's the time to speak up if, if you're interested. ML?
Thank you, John. I would actually like to make a nomination if, if that's appropriate. I think I heard that language being used by Allison when she talked about the liaison. And I'd like to nominate Laura to be our liaison. We have seen her champion the airport project. Well, my entire time on planning, on planning board, which hasn't been that long, but I think she has knowledge and, and interest and, and will serve us well.
Okay. Is any other interest or nominations? Well, that looks pretty promising for Laura to me.
I'll second the nomination if, if there needs to be one.
All right.
Can I just, John, can I just speak to it really quick? I just want to, I just want to emphasize again that although my focus tonight has been this housing element of, of this process, I really appreciate and support. I really appreciate and support the work that the transportation department has done. And I really, really sincerely like, I don't I don't know if everybody here knows my background, but I am a public policy facilitator. I design and facilitate processes like this that try to work on public policy issues that are controversial. And so designing stakeholder processes is something that I do. And I absolutely am one hundred percent supportive of, again, as I said, having really, really robust scenarios that include, you know, maintaining and extending and growing the airport as one of those scenarios. So I don't want anybody to think that my comments about housing mean that I have a predetermined thought about that. I, I really, truly, truly, truly believe in the power of robustly exploring alternatives and having advocates for every possible outcome or every likely outcome, make their case and really exploring the pros and cons and benefits and all of that. So if I were the liaison to planning board, yes, I'm gonna have an eye to make sure that this housing piece is incorporated and try to advocate for that, but also advocate for a fair examination of all the scenarios.
Okay, George?
Question around Laura's statement just then, which was that she plans to advocate for housing when she's on, on this. I mean, I guess that's my question, is the role of the liaison? Because my understanding of the role of planning board liaisons is not necessarily advocacy. It's a liaison between two groups. And so I, I want to be clear, I have no problem with, by the way, I have no problem. I think it's great that Laura's willing to do it, and I'm excited for that.
I just want to make sure that we're clear. I'm not advocating that we pick the scenario for housing. I'm advocating for robust examination of scenarios, including one that focuses on housing and including one that focuses on growing and expanding the airport. I have focused on housing tonight because that is something that I see as a little bit of a gap where I did not see how six point two six was being included in this process of really looking at a housing scenario. But I'm not going to be necessarily advocating, certainly not on behalf of planning board for any particular outcome. I'm advocating for a fair process that looks at all of those alternatives. I just want to make sure that's clear that I, I
It sounded a little different than, than what you just said to me, at least. So thank you. I, I just want to be clear on the role, which is my understanding of these liaison roles are not advocacy roles in any way, that they are liaison roles. And I, I think, I, I'd like some, some clarity from the city and some clarity from John as the chair on what the expectations of liaison are and what guardrails there are as it relates to personal advocacy versus representation from the planning board and what this role is. I just wanted to be clear, both to, to bar board, but also to this group, so that they understand sort of what the parameters are or what they aren't.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna interject really quickly. I think that's a great question. And Laura, I totally support you being on there. Thank you for volunteering. And I'm about to sign off, so. Good night. I support Laura. Bye, guys.
Well, I think George's questions are good ones. Like, what, what is the role that's expected? And what are the guardrails?
Yeah, I'll, I can, John, you can speak to that, and I'm happy to add any pieces from the city.
I, I'm not aware of any formal guardrails, George, to your question, other than the good judgment of the individual involved and the understanding of, of their relationship to planning board and their position as liaison. So I, you know, I think we, we have to, we have to depend on the, on the good judgment of, of whoever we nominate, frankly. But if you or if anybody else has, has some more thoughts on that or detail, I think now's the time to come out with it.
Sure. I'll just add in the packet that Kathleen submitted to you all. It was shared some kind of expectations of, of the liaison. So we, we do have that as reference that that we can additionally review. But like George was mentioning, it's really to represent the planning board as a whole and, and, and the perspective you provide to the city. So that's, you know, we, we'd love that perspective on there. So that would, that would be a hopeful contribution.
Thank you. So George, I don't know.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's plenty. I, I just wanted to understand it in a little bit more detail and just make, make sure we all understood it. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a nomination in a second. So I'd think it would be good if everyone stuck their hands up if they think that that's an appropriate decision for us to make. I do one, two, three, four, five, six. And so congratulations, Laura. You're it.
Thank you, thank you. I didn't prepare an acceptance speech. No, thank you, everybody. And I will do my best to represent what I think is the perspective of the planning board, which I'll just state is we want a fair process that looks at the various alternatives, including a housing scenario, but we are, do not have a predetermined outcome in mind. We're very interested in hearing the community conversation, having good data, having, you know, good representation and, and seeing this process be really, really successful in looking at these long-range planning issues for the airport property.
That sounds good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Laura. I'll be in touch with you later this week.
Thank you, Allison. I look forward to working with you. And Kathleen also.
Good night.
We're grateful that you're willing to do that, Laura. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay. So now we can move on to other matters from staff, maybe. Brad, do you have any?
No, I, I really don't have anything. Your thing, just appreciation for representation on the board, on the liaison that we just talked about and work on the various projects. So happy to answer any questions you all might have. But you did all get, I will mention one last thing. You all did get copied on email from who was it from? Sorry. Getting a little late. From Macon towels about some of the permitting challenges we've had. Just wanted to let you know I'd be responding and copying you all. We are struggling with our plan review turnaround times, but have some aggressive plans in place to try to address that. Happy to talk to folks individually about that if you have questions.
Okay, well, I think that's great. And I'm glad you're responding to him. I, I would, don't don't let yourself be pushed around too much, but I'm glad you're responding to him.
Well, we, we, we know we aren't where we need to be right now, so.
Okay. And, oh, George, your hand is up.
Sorry, it shouldn't have been.
Okay. All right. I don't even know if we have Hella with us tonight. I don't see her on the list. Any matters from the board?
Hella's here.
Oh, Hella, you are here. Okay.
I am here. I didn't have to turn on my, my video today. I didn't I don't have any matters either.
Okay. And thank you. Any matters from the board? All right.
You know, I had a quick question for Hella, what we've got you and we've got this matters. You know, we were, we were talking about the concept of this city of, of a developer, apartment developer putting in a contract that someone couldn't own a car if they hadn't, if they took an apartment there. Is there any, is there any legal issue with that? I'm just kind of curious, because I don't know if I was just curious what your perspective was on that. What we had.
No, I think I have to think back. I, I do think that we've had a requirement like that before and particularly thinking of our redevelopment on the hill, the Marpa House. Maybe some of you guys will remember it. I think we did draft a condition there that there was very little parking available. And we kind of created a parking management plan where the renters had to disclose whether or not they owned a car and whether or not they were going to be allowed to park it there or bring it there. So we did make that a requirement to become a contractual requirement between the landlord and
Yeah, thanks, sir.
It is something that is, I think, pretty cumbersome and difficult to enforce.
Yeah, yeah, of course. So do you do, so that requirement was created? That development is still not been completed, is that right?
I think that's
Okay, all right. So we don't have a working example of that yet. That's good to know. Thank you, Hella. Appreciate.
Okay, anything else? Well, I propose we adjourn this meeting. So, thank you. See you next.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks.